October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which is ours. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm taking a deep breath. Okay, so we're going to start off tonight's meeting with a public hearing on the Town Code, Chapter one thirty-three, for solid waste. So I'd like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter one thirty-three, on solid waste.
So move.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the public hearing is opened. Do we have a list of names or anything, or is anyone here for the public hearing on solid waste? I don't think there's anyone here for the public hearing on solid waste. Okay, that's a very exciting topic. Um, so I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter one thirty-three, on solid waste.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the, the public hearing is now closed. Um, the next part of the agenda is our public audience. You are allowed five minutes. Um, I was wondering who's here for public audience, Joan, Susan, Diane. Uh, just one reminder, the hearing for the, um, open space, um, there was an error by the current that will be held. We'll, we'll, we'll approve it tonight, and it will be held on November eighteenth. Um, so just putting that out there. Um, Joan, if you want to come on up. Is that my time, my timer here?
Joan Cole, twenty-six Wickham Drive. It's very disappointing to see that town manager Mark Nelson has reduced the law, rule of law to public disgrace. Town manager Mark Nelson removed the legal document requiring the public audience settlement to be affixed to the wall of the main meeting room that was there for decades. Although town manager Mark Nelson, when questioned, said that the paper legal document was not appropriate, but a paper document of rules of procedure was now affixed in its place. Anyone regulating free speech should not hold public office. After much discussion with town manager Mark Nelson on the optics of removing the document, Mark Nelson has placed the negotiated settlement to its proper place on the wall of the main meeting room. Thank you. It appears that town manager Mark Nelson is a reasonable person. Tom Roy made a presentation at the May thirteenth Board of Selecting meeting stating that the town published an RFP for the management of the town farm that was vacant. As a result of the RFP, Tom Roy, Public Works Director, contacted Hopeful Farms in Granby. He was told that farms need a hook to sustain their farming and additional income. The hook is applicable to a private farm, but not the one owned by the town under the Amosino deed. As a result of Tom Roy's compensation, a lease agreement was signed with Chris Latt's and Flumic Farm Products. The town signed the lease with Chris Latt's and Flumic Farm Products to manage and maintain Eno Farms' town farm and provide composting and recycling town products on the property. Lease agreement with Flumic Farm Earth Products states both leasees shall use and occupy the lease premises to engage in farming community, educational, charitable activities in accordance with that certain wood waste, compost, and recycling, to engage in agriculture activities in general, including the cultivation of fruit, vegetable, flowers, and field crops, engage in the public retail sale of products directly. Permitted use of the land shall include periodic public and private events, provided the proceeds of such events are used to support the programs and activities of leasee, and further that such events comply with all applicable zoning requirements, end quote. According to the state of Connecticut definition of farming, it appears that recycling component is inconsistent with the definition of farming, since the products of recycling come from outside the farm. This operation requires DEP permits that have not been issued. In eighteen eighty-two, Amosino deeded the town about a hundred forty acres of land and building for the town poor for one dollar. Amosino deeded the town properties for the maintenance and management of the acreage. That is for the poor of Simsbury. The town is to be the steward of the land and assume the fiduciary responsibilities under the umbrella of the Attorney General's Charities Division. The statute of charitable uses, Connecticut Statute forty-seven-two, requires that the donor's purposes be carried out and do no other use. Originally, the charities division of the Attorney General's Office was in contact with the town daily to ensure the adherence to the Eno D. Charities Division of the, of the years has advocated its responsibility oversight, allowing the town to violate the legal stipulations of the Eno D. The town has not been able to manage the functioning of the town farm, allowing outside organizations to manage a working farm is in violation of the Eno Trust. Over the years, they have been rampant mismanagement with a lawsuit for selling contaminated raw milk. Gifts of Love Management of the farm has led to neglect, abandoning of the property. Gifts of Love Management of the farm was in violation of the Eno Trust. Town attorney De Cusenso has not thoroughly reviewed the lease agreement with Flumic Farm Earth Products for compliance with the Eno D in a written statement, thereby neglecting his duties to give the town legal advice for compliance. The town should review the lease agreement with Flumic Farm Products for compliance and entertain some dialogue with the charities division of the Attorney General's Office for repurposing the land to comply with the Amos D. On September eighteenth, the zoning commission held a hearing on the text amendment to allow Flumic to operate the town farm. Many people spoke against the amendment that was in violation of the Eno Trust, but the text amendment was passed by the zoning commission under the guidance of town planner George McGregor. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury's ads and Twitter at Joan Cole.
Perfect timing there, Joan. Thank you. Um, who else is here for, um, Susan?
Good evening, uh, Susan Messino, forty-one Madison Lane. I brought a little show and tell, one for the audience, one for the Board of Selectmen. Um, you may have seen, uh, that we have an American chestnut in the Ethel Walker Woods in Simsbury, um, that is producing nuts. Um, the town was contacted by the American Chestnut Foundation, maybe four years ago, that there was a fairly large American chestnut in the woods. I've been checking on it every year, and literally this year, the tree's not looking great. Literally this year, I saw that the tree had nuts, and then we got an email two days later from the foundation saying that they also saw the nuts. They came out and collected some. Those nuts, oh, I meant to tell you, to feel the inside of the nut, it's like super velvety and, so we, and it's very prickly on the outside, so you need gloves to collect it, but then it's very velvety on the inside. So I've been keeping an eye out for other nuts, and it turns out all the nuts that are in there are infertile. They're like, look like a large raisin, and, uh, they won't produce a tree. Um, but they took some additional nuts that hadn't opened yet, and they just finished shucking all of them. And of everything that we collected, they found two that were actually fertilized. So that means there's another American chestnut somewhere as well. So, um, I, so this is really exciting, and it's kind of gotten other people wondering if their tree is an American chestnut. A lot of the trees out there are now, um, hybrids, but this one was genetically verified by the American Chestnut Foundation a few years ago. So I just wanted to let you know, we have a lot of special stuff in town, um, which is why I'm trying to be careful with it as a member of the Open Space Commission. So, and I wanted to thank you now that we have the disposition of open space on the right process, and I know we're scheduling the hearing. And, um, so the title of that ordinance is Process and Criteria for Open Space Disposition. And the Open Space Committee does have a draft, uh, uh, a, a, a data checklist for disposing of open space land that asks a whole bunch of questions just to make sure that we're not missing anything, or not, you know, whatever. So, um, now we're focused on the criteria. I did provide that checklist to Culture, Parks, and Rec. I don't know if they used it for their discussion. I should have asked for Tom Tiberzki to send it to the Conservation Commission. Um, but the Open Space, um, Committee, um, I assume will be discussing that at our next meeting, which will now be before the public hearing, and then providing that to the Board of Selectmen as soon as we can. We haven't had a meeting since this all came up. So, um, and then the last thing I wanted to mention tonight is I'd really highly recommend an event at the library tomorrow. Uh, Ed Faison, he's the Senior Ecologist at Highstead, which is a research institute here in Connecticut. Ed is really one of the premier people looking at, um, deer interactions and natural forests and wilderness in New England. And, um, he gave a talk a number of years ago on land stewardship, um, at the library that's currently on our Open Space page. His slides are up there. So, uh, the Land Trust invited him, um, to give a talk. It's tomorrow night, and his talk is something about wilderness and wildlands in New England, or something like that. And for those of you don't know, who don't know, this year is the sixtieth anniversary of the Wilderness Act, which is basically just to say we need some areas for nature for everybody. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan. Did we have anybody else? Oh, Diane?
Diane, excuse me, Diane Ashfire. Okay, I want to say congratulations, because we have finally tabulated Simsbury's qualifying properties to get a moratorium, so we can get some relief from the statute, the state statute, so we can do things our way. So congratulations to everybody who worked on getting that tabulation together, and hopefully we can now start doing it the way Simsbury needs to do it. So I'm saying, let's take a deep breath. Take a look at the entire canvas of our town. What nature gave us and gives us. I mean, it's pretty extraordinary. Our view, our water, everything that nature has in this town is pretty extraordinary. What former leaders designed and created is pretty extraordinary. Pensive, but clean. I mean, these are names nationwide that are known for conservation and preservation and land use and new ways of building things. And all of the leaders in town that we've had on various boards, some streets are named for them, pathways like Helen's Way, names over there on their hometown heroes have helped create what Simsbury is today. And so, I'm saying, I want to see your name up there with Lubachley. I want to see your names. This is the opportunity we had to do what only Simsbury can do for affordable housing and I think for Simsbury, what we also really need to focus on is affordable home ownership, not just renting our town, but having smaller homes, homes that maybe can be converted from our current inventory of marketplace affordable homes that through a rental or a, I don't know, a CHA, uh, tax commitment, we can make those monthly payments affordable, so people can afford to buy their houses. Now, I know I was in real estate for a long time, but the reason home ownership works is the very thing that caused a problem with every time we tried to build affordable housing. They couldn't get a mortgage from a bank because they didn't allow for the appreciation. There is a way of creating what we created in Hazel Valley, where you lease the land, so the developer doesn't have the cost of the land. So there are so many things. If we put our heads together, your name will go down in history as creating affordable properties that give everybody an opportunity to live here, and everybody wants that kind of development. So, I also challenge you particularly, Mark. We've got to get that property the state owns, the parking lots, they have to become Simsbury's. If we don't do the big stuff, the little stuff, the silly little parcels here and there, it's like filling the mayonnaise jar with the sand before you put in.
Time, time's up, Diane. Could you wrap it up, please?
I ask you, get your name down in history. And get that parking lot, and let's do the big stuff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Holly, are you here for public audience?
Hello, I'm Holly McGrath, uh, two Old Barge Road. I am here, uh, speaking as, uh, Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. I know that we have some annual savings, and I'm asking for your consideration of some items that the library has requested. First, we are looking for an additional, um, part-time adult library services hours. This is an immediate need. The, um, adult service librarian position, uh, helps us process passports, which my family took advantage of. And in the last fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four, it brought in over six thousand dollars in revenue for the town. And already, in this short term of this fiscal year, it's brought in one thousand dollars. So if we had more hours, we could process more, more passports. Uh, we also perform notary services for library patrons, uh, notarizing on average nearly two thousand documents per year. So this is truly a hub of the community. I've also had items notarized at our library. So I, I encourage you to, to see how that would help us, uh, provide more service to our community if we increase those hours. It would be a cost that we're asking for of twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. The second request is, uh, does not sound immediate. It is a study of, uh, furniture use, but this has been cut in previous years several times. Uh, much of our furniture dates back to two thousand eight and some of it back to nineteen eighty-five. And, um, so it is now in need of replacement. And we know that with a study, we can use, um, wiser planning and strategic, um, use of any of the furniture and plan it out to be replaced on a more regular basis as opposed to at one, one point. So our whole goal is truly to plan ahead and, um, be strategic with, with the funding. I also just want to say that, um, the library service hours does not add any headcount or increase to benefits or fringe. It's truly just additional hours. So help us to improve our library. I have an elementary child, a high school child, my elderly mother. We all value the library, and I think all that we can do for the library serves the entire community, no matter what age. Thank you.
Is that everybody for public audience? So the next item on our agenda tonight is we have a presentation from the Economic Development Commission. We have Charmaine Seavey here, we have Matt Harvey here. Matt Harvey, right? Isn't Matt Harvey someone famous too?
Yeah, he was a pitcher for the New York Mets.
Oh, that's right, Matt Harvey, and they're playing tonight, right? Okay. What time is, what, whatever.
It's at eight. Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, I was like, Matt Harvey.
I thought he was a white rabbit.
Yeah.
Um, so they're going to do a presentation for the, um, EDC, and actually, that is something that the board is in the, is in the, um, in our ordinance, in our charter, that every day before the thirty-first of October, that we hear from the Economic Development Commission to make recommendations for economic development in our town. They present it to us, and then we, um, can listen, and we can provide direction and goals back to the commission, um, on an annual basis as we choose before the thirtieth of November each year. So, yeah, um, does we normally ask for a fifteen-minute? I don't know how long your deck is.
I, I hope it doesn't take long.
Okay, okay. I mean, it'll probably go longer, but I'm just giving you a guideline, Charmaine. Oh, thank you. Do you want me to cut you off?
I mean, like, we ask, if you ask, we ask questions and stuff.
Well, we're gonna ask you.
Questions, so, okay. You're gonna ask questions at the end or in the middle?
Um, how do you prefer? You want to get through the deck? Okay, go ahead. Shoot.
Okay, all right, well. Um, so, good evening, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm Charmaine Seavey, and I'm Chair of the Simsbury Economic Development Commission. And with me is Matt Arthur, who is my Vice Chair. Arthur, yeah.
I know, I, I knew I blew that.
And, um, we were both voted into our positions in April. So we are both relatively new to our positions. Um, but first, let me say, um, thank you. The EDC is a chartered-defined group, um, appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Um, members have specific experience requirements contained in the charter, making the committee one of the very few committees in-town government that requires specific and relevant experience prior, prior to appointments. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for recently adopting economic development in town as one of your top priorities. As we know from last season's budget cycle, the town experienced virtually flat grand list growth last year, meaning that there was essentially no increase in tax revenue following either the municipal or the town of education side of our town budget. And this is one of the chief drivers of the mill rate, mill rate increase that place increasing tax burdens on our property owners and local businesses. Last night's Board of Finance meeting, it was noted that most recent estimates for the grand list of two thousand twenty-four, upon which next year's taxes will be based, gets again for virtually no growth whatsoever. Uh, clearly, this state of affairs is not sustainable. I am happy to report that town manager Mark Nelson, who took over the town's Chief Executive Office, Office this past January, has also placed a top priority on driving economic development and has been working with myself and EDC Vice Chair Matt Arthur to breathe new life into a committee which, prior to his arrival, had not met for nearly a year. Today, EDC is in a rebuilding stage. In fact, new appointments to the commission are before the Board of Selectmen for action this evening. And again, I want to thank the board for quickly filling these vacant positions and helping us get up to full complement of members. For the current fiscal year, the EDC and town managers are building a network of partners, beginning with the recently approved engagement with Main Street Partnership and re-engaging with our old partner, the Chamber of Commerce. The memorandum of understanding between the town and Main Street now include an actual work plan, and one of EDC's chief roles will be to monitor and complement those efforts by continuing to expand and enhance strategic partnerships. One example of this initiative is to work with Ray Legan, Executive Director, Chamber of Commerce, as a contractor for the EDC to develop, produce, and conduct a listening tour of business in Simsbury, as well as other prospective businesses. Ray will provide services to develop a program that will gather information under the direction of the EDC and town manager to help grow the Simsbury Town Grand List. The EDC Listening Tour Plan is not part of the normal Chamber of Commerce service offered to the Simsbury business community. This is a project initiated by the EDC to help achieve the goal of growing the grand list while keeping the charm that is unique to Simsbury. This service plan is being requested by the EDC. It is above and beyond normal chamber outreach. It will be developed by Ray Legan with administrative help from chamber staff. The service plan will be specific to Simsbury and will only be used to promote Simsbury with information to help the EDC's goal of growing the grand list. We expect the final results of the plan will help stimulate economic stability and growth for the town of Simsbury. The plan will require funding from the Board of Selectmen. Ray Legan and the chamber staff will work side by side with EDC and the town manager to develop information that will grow the Simsbury Grand List. Here's an outline of our proposed seventy-five-hundred-dollar service plan to be developed by Ray Legan and chamber staff to conduct a professional business listening tour for EDC. I have my special unicorn cup with me, so. Um, number one, work with EDC and town manager to produce a list of about a dozen businesses to have in-person meetings with established businesses in Simsbury, as well as prospective businesses outside of Simsbury. Two, EDC will work with Ray Legan to establish a list of discussion areas and questions. The purpose of the meeting is to explore thoughts and recommendations from businesses and spread goodwill and reinforce to businesses that the town and elected officials do care and want to work to help build a vibrant business community. Three, for each business meeting plan, Ray Legan will invite the town manager, BOS member, and EDC member to the meetings. Depending on the business setting, a total of three to four people will be invited to join in the fact-finding discussion. Four, after each business meeting, Ray Legan will work with the EDC to produce a summary of what has been learned. This will be a work in progress, and assets will be made, and assessments will be made if questions or techniques need to be altered to provide better results. Five, the purpose of these meetings and summaries is to provide knowledge and information to EDC to put actions in place to help Simsbury grow the grand list. It is the belief of EDC that Ray Legan and the Chamber of Commerce are uniquely positioned within our community to provide professional services to interview and communicate with businesses, which will stimulate new business interests and grow existing businesses in Simsbury. The EDC is requesting the release of seventy-five-hundred dollars in funding that was included in the contingency budget this year to fund this program. In addition to our longstanding engagement with Main Street Partnership and our new engagement with the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, the EDC will be looking to form new strategic partnerships with local stakeholders, engage in the town's upcoming website redesign process, funding for which is also before the Board of Selectmen this evening. We are also looking forward to specific tasks that have been outlined by the town manager, including a review of the town's current tax abatement policy and the drafting of recommended updates to, uh, for consideration by the Board of Selectmen at the end of the calendar year. So, thank you for all you do and for your support of what we do at the EDC. By working together in to support of our common goals, we look forward to two thousand twenty-five being a very impactful year. Charmaine Seavey and Matt Arthur.
Yeah, I'd like to open that up for questions. Just one question, is there, uh, can we get a documented version of the plan?
Sure.
Well, can we just get a copy of the plan? I, I mean, just so, so we could look at it, um, you know, make a decision on it.
It's fine on pink paper.
Yeah. So we can see that actually what the plan is, um, that raised, you guys are proposing.
Right now, you want to remake this?
No, I was just saying if we could all get, get one electronically, that would be helpful. Um, I don't know. So, so I, I was gonna open it up to see if anybody had questions. Yeah, go ahead, Curtis.
My only question, I think it's great worth what you're doing. Um, how'd you come up with seventy-five-hundred dollars, and what does that cover?
Well, it's covering from scoop to nuts, from, you know, we're just in the talking place now, but as far as developing questions being asked, the list of, um, businesses that we'll go see both in and outside of Simsbury. So we're saying around the dozen, it could be fourteen, it could be thirteen, it could be fifteen, whatever. So what should we put together? So all the time it takes to organize all of that, all the time it takes for all the phone calls for Ray to make to establish all the times and places, uh, working together on all the questions. Like I said, it's also a work in progress. So if we do the first four and after, and it would be, you know, members of the BOS can attend, as well as town manager, well, as, you know, we'll have as many as a room can hold, or, you know, how many of the potential businesses would like to have, you know, you know, I don't think they'd be happy if we showed up with ten people. Um, so we continue to reassess. So it's a, it's a consulting, uh, project in process that will continue. It will take, especially right now, it's not the best time of year for it. We can start on some of them. So it's an ongoing process of time and development.
I, I was gonna add too, Curtis, that's the amount of money, that's a set amount that the, we've been giving the chamber, um, in our, um, outside agency funding. We were. We were providing that for the last few years for the Tourism Tourist Center. So, it was an ask at our budget, um, this past year, and we didn't, we, we wanted to see what the role of the Chamber would be, since there was no longer a tourism center. So, at the time of our budget this year, we said that seventy-five hundred dollars would be held in contingency until we could decide and see what, um, you know, how we could have Ray help us. So, that was the set amount.
So, it's like a consulting?
Well, it was the amount that we all agreed to put aside when there was a use for Ray other than the, the, um.
Is the, is the fee going to Ray as a consultant or to the Chamber?
That's what I asked, that's what I was asking.
I believe it's going to the Chamber, it's not going to his.
I don't know.
Well, I didn't know if he was in a separate consulting game, like.
No, because his staff, it takes some staff to do all the arrangements, who would, would be helping also with clerical duties and everything. And also, um, tourism is now kind of folded, and I was a member of tourism for many, many years, folded into the EDC, which actually, one of our, well, liaisons, St. Thomas from the library has been kind of heading up that portion of the EDC tourism.
So, I have some questions. Um, considering that the Chamber is now the Simsbury Granby Chamber, how is this gonna be specifically focused on, you know, this project is specific to Simsbury, but the resources of the Chamber, so if we're spending seventy-five hundred dollars and it goes to Chamber, those resources, uh, from the Chamber go to Simsbury and Granby, because the Chamber is both. And yet, we want to make sure that, um, you know, this is a, i- in your words, a Simsbury-focused, um, lis- you know, EDC, uh, driven listening tour. Um, so I, I, and I have some other questions, but.
Also, all of the questions, all the information, all of the thought is all going to be part of the economic, Simsbury Economic Development Commission we're working with Town Manager, so it's all going to be Simsbury-focused. We're not going to be focusing on Granby, there's not gonna be any questions. And the information that will come, will come, you know, he doesn't have a staff of twenty people or anything, it's, you know, one or two people. You know, it's proprietary nature, they're not going to be emailing it out to Granby or any other town in the state.
Well, my point is, is that the resources of, whether they're fiscal resources, I know where you're sitting right there, uh, or the, um, manpower resources. I mean, it is a split Chamber, so the, the focus of the Chamber.
Well, the people can work on how, I mean, it's how you want your staff to work, so.
Just for reference sake, I met yesterday with Mike Walsh, who's the Town Manager for Granby, offering similar services, we are a service organization to our members and to our communities. So, I'm trying to put together a similar, not this exact listening tour, that's not what they had an interest in, but other projects, which we would actually access consult for them for. So, our staff, our programs can be used however we choose to defer and de- and direct those folks. So, part of our time would be spent in this particular venture for the town of Simsbury. Does that answer it, where you?
I have some questions. Um, how will the twelve or fourteen businesses be selected? Um, and sort of what will you be looking for in, um, outside businesses um, that you think will be helpful in this project? And do they have to be members of the Chamber?
No, it has nothing to do with being a member of the Chamber. Uh, many of the businesses might, because many businesses in Simsbury, I mean, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, but I don't have a brick and mortar business, so, you know, that's not what we're looking for.
So, how will the businesses be selected? Are you looking for their diversity?
Well, it'll be a group effort of, uh, I mean, we have, Steve is on our, you know, is our liaison. We have a liaison from the library, uh, we have, uh, Ray's one of our liaison, we have Main Street liaison, we have. It'll be mainly between pretty much Ray and maybe Matt and I, we have some new members coming on. I mean, we're, we're missing three members right now, so as soon as the Board of Selectmen give us those new members, it'll be a, a group effort on coming together with a list, deciding on the list, and then seeing if the businesses even wanna talk to us. You know, just 'cause we list whatever business, doesn't mean they wanna talk to us, so they could decline. So, we have to come up with businesses that wanna talk to us.
I'd like to just jump in here too. One of, one of the things, just to put a little flavor on this, is, I think we've talked about before, is streamlining, say, the applications process or the permits process, or whatever we can do as a small community to make things easier for the businesses that are already here. That's one part of this, so, you know, the EDC is concerned with what can they do to bring in new businesses, but also what can we do to sustain and support the businesses that we have. So, I would answer your question this way, I would say that of the twelve, we wanna make sure that we get a cross-section of the business community. So, some smaller, maybe one larger. I, I would, I would use whatever influence I had with the EDC team to recommend that they select a range of local businesses, some that have been here very briefly and others that have been here for a long period of time. Because the information that we wanna gather isn't about the, the individual businesses' answer necessarily. It's about the difference between the businesses' answers to similar questions. And how can we compile all of this into one cohesive group? So, in the past, there've been, you know, listening tours, and there's been, you know, meetings and so forth. And I think they've been viewed largely as helpful, but we're looking to bring that to a more strategic level. And we really wanna hear from our local businesses. So, one of the things that, that Charmaine didn't mention, uh, and I don't wanna steal or thunder, but at every EDC meeting now, a local business is going to be invited to come and meet with the EDC here about what the EDC is doing and offer suggestions and ideas. And also, you know, it's a two-way street, provide information to the EDC and, and to staff here about what the business is, is trying to achieve and, and what their strategic plans are. So, I don't want the Board to look at this in a vacuum. It's, it's one piece of, as Charmaine said, trying to re-engage the EDC, because the EDC had not met for a long time. And I think that the last time that they got funding was an eighteen thousand dollar ask that was also, coincidentally, from Year End Savings, uh, some years before I got here. And that was, I think, the last time that they got funded directly. So, Finance Director will be here later and can answer that question. But I think if, if economic development is the Board's number one or number two priority, certainly my number one or number two priority, a funding request for seventy-five hundred to re-engage with the Chamber makes a lot of sense.
So, I have a couple, I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead, I have a couple.
So, the co- given tonight and not having the, the plan, the EDC plan, i- if you guys could put this together, like, so that we could have it circulated to our Board, and if we can bring it to our October twenty-third special meeting, so that we can actually see the plan on paper and even the EDC plan. I mean, I don't know if you guys, if, you know, supposedly, we get a annual report of activities and recommendations for improving, um, the economic, the, this is referenced, I think, in the, in the, um, presentation. So, if you look at what's in the Charter, it asks for certain information, and then.
That's what I was trying to do, but.
Yeah, okay, no, you did present.
It's been a nobody had met for a year and we started in April.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just saying, but I'm saying if, if, for this propos- proposal, it would be good. I just had to write down all the numbers, if we could have a, like, a formal, semi-formal proposal showing what this is, that we could have on an agenda, that would be really helpful. So, that would be one ask that I have. Um, I did have a couple of questions, and that is, what is the expected start and, is there an expected start and finish date for this tour? You know, that would be helpful to include in that proposal, so we know how long it's gonna take. And then, um, a couple asks that I would have, which I will ask when I see it, um, is, you know, can we break out the, the money, thirty-seven fifty, thirty-seven fifty, and at a midpoint, get reports back on the progress? You know, those are the kind of things I think that would be valuable to this Board, to see where things are going. Um, or, yeah, so that, those are just the notes that I had, um, knowing that this was coming up, and whether it's end of the first quarter, end of second quarter, something like that.
Personally, I like to do everything as fast as I can do things, so, um.
Well, if you, if it's a four-month window and you guys are, or is it an ongoing?
No, it's, it's, you know, if we could do it in four months, I mean, we've got a lot of holiday time coming up. First of all, we have to get approval, we have to get our new members, 'cause we need, you know, more than just the few people that we have. Um, so, if we can get the list, get it all together, get it all organized, you know, is, is, if we could do it in four months, you know, what, we've got holiday times and vacations and bad weather and everything else, so it might take a little bit longer.
Okay.
I'm to- I mean, ea- after each meeting or a couple of meetings, we would certainly be reporting back to the EDC, which Steve goes to.
Yeah.
Because I'm a share of information, so I would, it, we can only have a few people at the meeting, so who's ever there would be sharing with the rest of the group, so that we could. And that's why I say it's a share of information, and if we hear, if we start hearing something that's a hot button, as happens in focus groups and that, then, you know, we would, we need to react to that and maybe ask questions in a different way, or realize that's a hot button and figure out what to do with that, so it's a. If, and if something comes to light that's important, you know, we should act on it as soon as, not, not wait six months later when a final bunch of paper is written and, and presented, you know. There's things that we can do ahead of time. If somebody expresses interest in some kind of rebuild or whatever, whatever, it's like, okay, let's, let's get on this, you know. So, I'm not for waning for just when a final report that's twenty pages long comes around.
Okay, okay, um, I think Steve had a question, and then we're gonna.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. One of the things that I would like to, well, first of all, the clarification, the EDC does have twenty thousand dollars. So, they do have some money that they can tap into, it has not been tapped into yet. That's in addition to the seventy-five hundred is another.
Is it fifteen thousand?
Sorry, Steve, where, where do we have twenty?
Can we have twenty thousand set aside, that potentially could use it for wifi or something? Is it fifteen?
Yeah.
I think we budgeted tw- twenty, I don't have that in front of me, for, for economic development, but the majority of that was Main Street.
Eighty-five for Main Street, I thought, and fifteen was left.
But that was a hundred.
Yeah.
It was a hundred total.
Yes, okay.
Okay, when, when I say eighty-five, it went down to fifteen on the reciprocal side, so.
It was fifteen, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
One of the things, um, so, the twelve businesses, first and foremost, let me get ahead of the ball.
Fourteen, right?
I support getting the money to the Chamber. That is not my, um, concern. My concern is the sampling of twelve businesses out of the several hundred businesses is too small a pool. That's six hundred and twenty-five dollars per business, and I just don't know if we're gonna garner enough information. The Chamber has done such great things as economic stimulation in the past that I would hope that perhaps we can brainstorm at a EDC meeting to come up with other potential components and/or alternative venues to fund this money to the Chamber. They did September Fest, we can't underscore that enough, that was entirely the Chamber of Commerce. It was a huge economic, um, boost to all businesses in town. That had quantifiable results. I don't know how we're gonna quantify talking to twelve businesses with the same impact as a September Fest-type event. I'm not saying we should do September Fest. There's other things such as Restaurant Week, there's all sorts of promotions, I had spoken with Mark once about this. I think at a EDC meeting, we should also consider additional components with the Chamber that we could partner with to drive direct economic development with quantifiable results versus a listening tour, which I still think is an interesting component, I'm a big fan of survey monkey. Um, but the six hundred and twenty-five dollars per business, I just, you know, wh- when the two numbers came forward, I just don't know. Whereas if we took that seventy-five hundred and put it towards economic development as in an event and/or celebration of sorts, that's economic development, and I would wholeheartedly fund that and more with the Chamber, which would drive business to their members, to be frank, as well as the general business community.
Some of what, and I get even confused, 'cause I'm only done being Chair since April, but many things which you were bringing up as far as Restaurant Week and everything, I know Main Street Partnership, you know, is more geared to just storefront businesses and that sort of thing, so. But we work with Sarah also, so it's, we're all trying to be very collaborative and, and work together and figure it out. You know, I do twenty businesses, I don't know how much, you know, I can get, you know, the volunteers on EDC to actually do, or whatever, so, you know. The number is just, uh, gotta start with a number somewhere.
Again, just to underscore it, I'm not against the funding. I, I just feel that either maybe put the money towards a survey monkey and cast a wider net than twelve. I mean, ju- even if you just break down the components, there's office, there's, you know, there's just many types of business.
I can see what you're, what you're saying as far as a survey monkey, but it's not the type of survey I envisioned, because when you get in front of people, I mean, I can send out emails, business emails, and you get whatever you get back. But if you sit in front of people, like I just did today in my business, and uncovered something I was never expecting to uncover, you know, when you're, people still like to react to each other personally, and they'll, they'll say if they think they have a reason to say something more than you're expecting them to say, which can help something else and sprint off into something else, so. That's what I'm looking for, the personal interaction. And then also, a survey monkey doesn't really tell the businesses that you care about them at all. But if you're sitting in front of them saying, "We care about your business, here's four people from town, they're in different realms of the town government, and we care about your business, we're here to listen to you," that helps a lot. I've already heard from businesses that I just know from my thirty-nine years in Simsbury who are like disgruntled because they did this or that, and maybe nobody said thank you, nobody cares about them, you know. Well, I just started, so, good to know. But, you know, that's another big problem, and, and it helps the town and elected officials and everything for, for businesses to know you're in their face and you care about them.
Uh, so, I, I was gonna try to wrap up here unless there's anything critical.
Well, I would just say, just to, real quick, jump off Steve, is that, um, you may wanna consider, uh, having this a multi-year project if you're going to categorize businesses and focus on different categorizations, because if you even take twenty, there's more than twenty different types of businesses here. So, in that, you'd only have like a sampling of like one business, so you could, restaurants, you know, you know, these type of, uh, mom-and-pop shops, hotels, manufacturing, whatever. So, so you're, because the needs are gonna be very different from in each one of them, and I think, uh, i- i- too small a sample, you're not gonna get the data you're looking for.
Okay, so here's, here's what I'd like to end with. I think it would be great to have this proposal on paper, right? I think, um, listening to Steve is to maybe leave a couple of, um, alternative additions to the proposal to be determined at the EDC meeting, potentially, for, for something where Ray could engage. Um, and, um, if we can get that by, our next meeting, we're having a special meeting next week, if we could have it at that meeting, so that you guys aren't held up more, we could take a vote by the Board to, to approve that. Um, and again, as long as we, you know, there's, there's feedback, whether it's working or not working and adding value to us, you know, I think that would really, you know, like some sort of benchmarks of what you guys think. I know you don't know what you're gonna see, I think that would be the, how I would like to proceed, and that's not that far off to, to wait for that. Um, so, I think that's all I was gonna say on that. Um, and then it's in the timeline of us giving recommendations and providing goals back to you by November thirtieth. Hopefully, we could do it in, uh, in October, 'cause our next meeting is until November eighteenth, and I don't wanna, if, you know, if this is something you guys are ready to go with, um, that's great, because we know that next budget year, you're gonna come back, potentially, we'll come back and ask for the funding again, or we'll do it in a different means. So, if we see value in this, you know, we could determine what we wanna do next time. So, with that, I'd like to, um.
Can I just say, it was my intention, if I didn't communicate it, that every meeting that we have, once we start, we would be reporting on what's going on, so.
Okay, okay, and, you know, we will try to go to the EDC meetings and.
Yeah, but I mean, it would still be in the minutes and, you know, all.
Our liaison.
And we have our liaison to stay with there, so he will be there to weigh in and, and hear and feedback to us, which he, I'm sure you will do, 'cause you'll probably have a good report tonight. Um, I think that's all I was gonna say, are we okay with that for now, with that, to proceed?
I think it's great.
Okay, okay.
Just get something to you.
Good?
Thank you, very much.
Twenty minutes?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Charmaine.
Thank you, Charmaine.
Thank you, guys. Okay, where are we? Presentation, oh, First Selectment Report. Um, so, a couple of things I wanted to call out tonight is, um, we are recognizing three employees for ten years of service.
Woo-hoo.
None of them are here. But that's okay, Eric Gomes, um, ten years, he is now our HR Director. Um, Justin Walducci is a police officer, and Tony Piazza is the WPC Superintendent. And it says, "Gomez," was that from Tony, or is that from you, Franklin?
That was from Tony.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Tony is at the Mets game right now.
He is?
He is.
He just texted.
Is he related to Mike Piazza?
I cannot confirm.
You can't answer that.
Not.
You can't answer that.
Okay, no, he's not. And, um, my family is going to the game tomorrow night, so I hope they win tonight, so it's a little, they're a little bit up there. Um, okay, so that's that. The public hearing on the lot sale was inadvertently not listed by the Current, um, and we have to reschedule that tonight, which we will do later in the agenda, for November eighteenth, so anybody who is interested in speaking there. Um, a quick public service announcement, we have Senator Richard Blumenthal is coming to Simsbury tomorrow um, with an event at Eno Hall at ten-thirty AM. He is presenting the Simsbury Housing Authority with a HUD federal grant of six hundred thousand dollars for much-needed repairs of our affordable housing units. This money will be used for walk-in showers, lighting, and rehabbing units that are currently uninhabitable, which would allow us to get more, um, people into these, these things. State Rep Melissa Osborne submitted this grant application with help from the Housing Authority by defining these needs, um, so please join us tomorrow, um, at the event. Um, I just wanted to point out also that in the communications section of tonight's. I just wanted to point out also that in the communications section of tonight's agenda, which we really don't always talk about, there's two referrals on the open space sale. One was from the Conservation Commission that was not favorable. One was from Culture Parks and Rec that was favorable, so if you'd like to read those, um, please do so for the details. And then my last thing is I wanna thank the Aging and Disability Commission and the Senior Center for holding another enjoyable fashion show. Um, for next year, I challenge the full Board of Selectmen to walk the catwalk at Eno with the rest of us.
Yes.
And actually, I will challenge the Town Manager in the model at that event, too.
Absolutely.
So, um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Town Manager.
Thanks very much, Wendy. I, I enjoyed the fashion show, too, and, and just for those who didn't make it, uh, we did have, uh, some, uh, great, uh, great folks from this board were modeling, and congratulations, I won't name you, but you, uh, if there were prizes, you would have all won, and I will be, uh, participating next year, so glad, glad to do it. Uh, uh, before I get into the report, I just want to take a minute and respond to, and usually we, I don't make a practice of, of responding directly to public comment on any particular issue, but, uh, over the last couple of months, uh, one particular commentator has made, uh, the allegation that, uh, a recent change to the town's retirement plan was illegal. When I hear, you know, words that allege some illegality by this board or by our town, I, I do feel it necessary to respond to that. So just for this board's edification, we, out of an abundance of caution, checked with council again, and there is absolutely no similarity between the town of Simsbury's retirement plan and the city of Bridgeport's retirement plan. There are, as everybody knows, hundreds of variations to retirement plans. Uh, and the issue of whether or not you can authorize an in-service distribution is a technical one uh, that the lawyers and the actuaries and all the finance people, uh, did look at very carefully. So just wanted to put that out there and get it in the minutes that, uh, there was nothing improper that was done by this board relative to that on advice of council. Quickly, uh, on my report, uh, just wanna mention and thank our friends over at Ethel Walker School. Uh, I attended, uh, back on October fourth, a ribbon cutting of their brand-new sustainable residence hall. Um, it's Walker's first all-electric building. Uh, the first selectman joined me, uh, along with others, uh, in town government, and it's, uh, the whole building is fifty percent of its energy needs through, uh, eco-friendly, um, methods, and it was really a thrill, uh, to be there. Uh, I see Tom Roy's in the audience, so I better make sure that I mention that the next household hazardous waste collection is gonna be held at TPW campus at sixty-six Town Forest Road, and is eight AM to one PM on Saturday.
That's correct.
Do I have that right? So for everybody watching, Saturday Hazardous Waste, uh, over at TPW, and that's all I had tonight. Thanks so much.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm gonna start down to my right. Diana, do you wanna give, um, your updates?
Yes, okay. So Board of Ed, um, they, and I have them if anybody would like to see them. They have, uh, done their twenty-four, twenty-five school year committee assignments. Um, uh, they, uh, recognize nine students for their AP Sem, uh, AP Seminar Capstone Diploma, which is really something that's very impressive and very rare, um, and it's really quite, uh, high achievement honored to do. Uh, Latimer Lane Ribbon Cutting is going to be November twelfth at five thirty PM. And October nineteenth is the Simsbury High School One Act, and the Policy Committee is reviewing Title IX updates. Fair Rent Commission, we had our first hearing. It was, we successfully, or they were successfully able to mediate a settlement without having to make a ruling, and all parties were satisfied. CPR, Culture's Park and Rec, summer programs had a banner year. Um, they are also, um, they're, they have a committee that's looking at the long-term vision planning for the golf course with the dining vendor and the facilities there. Um, some of the price points were talked about, uh, for, uh, especially pool passes and stuff, and they're feeling that they may be at the point where we are gonna be start pricing out families. So there may be other ways that we need to look at, you know, really can't raise it too much more and, and what else needs to be done there. Um, SIMPAC, there's a board meeting next week. Uh, Aging and Disability Commission, you mentioned the fashion show. Thank you all for participating and, and coming. Uh, on October thirtieth, there will be a sensory Halloween event from four to six thirty at the library for, uh, people with disabilities, and it's freed for all ages. Um, they approved last night their twenty-four, twenty-five action plan, which I also have with me, but that will be going to the Town Manager as well as to our board. Um, the Age Friendly Community Designation Action Plan is in work to be done by the end of the year, and they are in desperate need of grants, and, uh, they really would like us to try to get some, you know, they, they'll be reaching out to Town Manager, they really need grants. Um, a few things in the senior communicator, St. Mary's Thanksgiving Luncheon, a holiday concert, and a New Year's Eve intergenerational bingo. Um, those are some fun events. Um, the Youth Service Advisory Board, this, I'm gonna hand this out to everybody. They, uh, their holiday program has started, and I know it was in the, uh, Town Manager's report, but if anybody would like, they are seeking donors. Um, there's gonna be a tree at the library and a tree at St. Mary's, but this particular program, they are looking for donors, uh, for, uh, families, you know, where you kind of adopt a family and, and buy gifts for them, um, and there's information on that. Uh, the Summer Reading Program participants at the library, they had a, the most they've ever had, three thousand forty-seven, uh, summer reading participants. And this past Monday, there was an intergenerational pasta and pumpkins, uh, event, and it was extremely successful.
Okay, should hire you to do the commercial. Um, Steve, what do you got?
Um, so I'm also on the Simsbury Housing Policy Advisory Committee, um, that.
The pack.
Uh, it's a committee that Mark chairs, and we are working on affordable housing as one of our concerns. The first phase of the committee's work is complete, uh, with the initial strategies reviewed, and they, they are moving on to Phase Two with three more meetings before a final report is submitted to the Board of Selectmen on January eighth of next year. EDC, pretty much, they covered it. They continue to move forward. They are in a reformation. We're going to hopefully approve the additional members, and it will be the first time that they will have a full board, to my knowledge, in years, literally. However, we will hopefully achieve that layer this evening. Simsbury Main Street, um, Find Your Space in Simsbury.com is still populating, and all local businesses and property owners are encouraged to use the new tool to develop and fortify our commercial presence in Simsbury. Tea Method opened up in the building next door to Town Hall and features tea as well as delicious baked goods, and has been, got engra- rave reviews. The Lucky Gut Collective, which will be a health food market and juice bar, will open early next year in the space that was vacated by Rue Restaurant. Of note is that two of the owners are from another local Simsbury business, that being the Children's Clubhouse down by Abigail's. Level Up Bar and Grill is opening in the previous Anna's Kitchen space in West Simsbury Center across from Tell Me To. No opening date, but sooner rather than later, if that means a specific time. Main Street will be holding a ribbon cutting for Kindred and Crew. This is a gift shop somewhat similar to, uh, Ava Grace, and is moving here from the shops at Farmington Valley, which of course is a different town. The Ribbon Cutting is No- is November seventh at five PM. Simsbury Main Street is also on the Plan Committee for Simsbury Celebrates, which is coming up on November thirtieth. They are still looking for donations for the, this free community event, and there is also still openings for the Gin- Gingerbread House Competition. Best Self Storage will be opening in the next few weeks in the north part of Simsbury next to the Oldswell Tavern. And lastly, Antonio's will be holding its fifty-seventh year of Cabbage Night festivities. For those that don't know, this is an all-ages event where we decorate our own trees with toilet paper thrown by hand, one of our air cannons, or one of our large catapults. The event is from four to eight PM on Wednesday, October thirtieth. A suggested donation of one non-perishable food product for each roll of TP you would like to throw is requested. All donations will go to our local Simsbury Food Pantry. Antonio's cleans up the debris every day until it's gone, and this year, we will yet again try and outdo our record by throwing five hundred and eighty-eight thousand feet of toilet paper, which is just over one thousand one hundred and seventy-five individual rolls.
So I have a comment to that, is I've lived here for thirty-seven years. We've never gone, so I'm gonna try to go this year. I just gotta tell ya, never thrown a toilet paper roll up at Antonio's.
It's sort of a coming of age.
I guess, yeah. Okay.
Get, we get the food and we throw the paper.
Up to you.
Oh, um, so I have, so the, um, SBAA, um, I attended their board meeting. Uh, transports were down this past month, um, one hundred and twenty-nine versus one seventy-five, um, the prior month, and they went out on more mutual aid, uh, twenty-nine out versus twelve back in, so that was their main update. Didn't have too much going, um, on other than that. That's quite a month.
Okay.
Um, and then.
I can personnel update, or do you want me to?
You can, it's okay.
Okay.
Um, Curtis?
Um, I don't too much, um, so I went, um, basically went through some regulations. There, um, wasn't anything that really enough to, to bring the board. Uh, the Police Commission, um, they had two officers finish, uh, Police Academy. Uh, four officers were still on extended leave. Um, we also had the senior picnic, which Wendy, you and I attended, where they had, uh, two hundred and twenty-five seniors, uh, show up for lunch, which is great. Um, they have also implemented a new, or they signed today, a new license plate reader. So as you drive down the street, it automatically takes pictures of your license and looks to see if there's an amber纹 on your car or, uh, your car stolen or using a crime. So, uh, police officers didn't do anything, just like go through a toll booth, just automatically takes pictures. Um, so.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna mention a couple of things. Well, first of all, I've been mentioning the Finance Subcommittee at nauseam for the last whatever year, um, that we would be participating in some capital ranking, but it sounds like, um, with the implementation of ClearGov, there's an automated way for the full board that Mark's going to, has shared, um, for us to do ranking individually. Um, so what I've asked for is to take those results and bring them to the Finance Subcommittee once those are submitted. Um, we'll, we'll see if this will work, and then we can kinda just review and make sure we're on the same page with where the capital plan or, or rankings fall out. So just trying to apologize that we haven't met and that we probably won't till, uh, and I won't have to talk about it again after that. And then Personnel Subcommittee, we had a presentation from GovHR. Um, actually Noel presented, um, with Tom and Eric the data from GovHR. Um, they will be coming back to us. We had asked for a few, like, up improvements in how we interpret the data and how we've been looking at it and how it's presented so that it, it is much more, um, understandable, because there's a lot of data buried in there. So that was one thing. And then the EDC slots, we had applications. We took the applications. We had party and we had, um, kind of, um, requirements, and we took who we had and we fit those specific people into those slots, which is how we're bringing it to you guys tonight. Um, and that's all I have. All right? Okay, so we have Amy here, who is not feeling well and sat through the whole Board of Finance meeting last night, right, for a, a long time. Oh, Consent Agenda. Forgot about that. Um, so I have a question for you and Tom. Um, I was, since no one spoke at the solid waste, are you yelling at me for not going to, the, the solid waste item, item C? Um, since nobody spoke to it, it's pretty boilerplate that we had to add this to be part of the crog, you know, the do the, the thing. I was going to move that to Consent Agenda, but there is a resolution in there that says each yes or no by the board members. Are we allowed to move that to the Consent Agenda, or should we just go through it?
You know, I really don't know the answer to that. It's a great question. I would leave it off just.
Okay, so we'll leave it off. Okay.
I don't wanna run into Congress.
Yeah, I was, I know, it took longer to say that than to do the, the agenda item later. Um, so I'm gonna ask if we can move item E, the tax overpayments, and the item G, the Arch Diocese donation, and thank them, and also the appointments to EDC to the Consent Agenda. Has anybody?
Moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, those are moved. Now, Amy, um, we can go through fi- um, year-end results. Just, I'll just give a little preference here. This is, I think, for the, for the new board members. They haven't done this before. Um, Heather and I have gone through it a couple of times, and, um, Amy presents where we ended up for the year, and then we go through some potential year-end requests and transfers. Um, so that's what we're gonna be doing tonight. So Amy, I'm gonna.
So in your packet, you have the year-end financial results. Um, the Board of Finance met last evening and reviews the financial results and the quests, the requests that are coming before you tonight. So I'm gonna give you the overall high level of it, and then if you have questions, happy to answer any. So starting on the General Fund under the revenues, um, we came in in excess of budget by three point nine million. Um, just to give you some context of the main areas that led to that surplus is, um, we have a municipal revenue sharing program that the state does. Um, it doesn't always happen. For the last few years, it has happened, and it has given us excess revenues this year of six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. They have also increased our pilot payment slightly, giving us, um, uh, twenty thousand, I wanna say, over what they had anticipated. So on the Town Manager's Office line item, um, you have excess revenues of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand. Uh, we did reach out to the state going into the fiscal year twenty-six budget as to whether we can budget for that municipal revenue sharing going into next year. They recommended we do not, and they anticipate that program going away. So, not such good news there. Um, moving down to the cl- Town Clerk line item, um, we had excess revenues of just over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we had an unanticipated, uh, large conveyance fee on a high-value property that came in fully around, um, the third quarter of the year. Um, within the Tax Department, we had excess funds of about five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, so here, we typically budget the ninety-eight and a half percent collection rate, and we typically collect taxes at about ninety-nine, over ninety-nine percent. Um, this is mainly due to our tax and, um, lean fees, our prior year tax collections. Um, and I think there was one more that was over as well. But the main current year tax collections where we typically budget, um, I'm sorry, we do not budget. It usually comes in in excess of about five, six hundred thousand dollars. This year, it only came in a hundred thousand dollars over. So we went back to, um, Francine, said what changed on the grand list. We had budgeted, um, five million in certificates of correction for assessment changes. Um, and there were certificates of correction changes totaling about twenty million. So quite the discrepancy, cost us six hundred thousand dollars. In talking to Francine, she laid out, um, the report of all of the changes. The majority were, were due to the revale and, um, the changes made by the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna mention what came up last night, that it was the Board of, Board of Assessment Appeals reviewing the, the requests and giving more than we expected.
Right. Um, moving on to the Finance Department, you'll see that we had revenues, um, in excess of about two point one million. So we had budgeted conservatively on our interest assumption rate, um, so we knew that we were gonna have a large surplus here. Um, two point one million, we did adjust for in the fiscal year twenty-five budget, so we won't have quite this surplus. Um, but some good news there for the end of this fiscal year. And then the last large area of a surplus was our Board of Education. Um, over the last two to three years, we've seen large increases in the number of students that want a tuition into our school. Um, so that trend continued for fiscal year twenty-four. And then coming out of COVID, each year, our building use rentals has increased, um, so we did see a surplus there as well. So that attributed to about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, in excess of budget. Um, so that gets you the majority of your three point nine million in excess revenues. Any questions on revenues? Moving on to expenditures, um, we came in under budget on expenditures by two million dollars. The majority of this was from staffing vacancies, um, so related to salary savings, benefit savings. And then we had our annually required contribution for our pension, um, that came in below budget. So the total savings for all of those three items combined was about one point eight million. And then in our debt service, um, we had estimated, I believe, a four percent interest rate in our debt service issuance for twenty twenty-four. Um, luckily, it came in lower than that, so we were able to save about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars on our debt service. So that makes up the majority of that two million dollars under budgeted. Any questions on that?
I just had a quick question. Um, the, so the vacancies, you know, we've bu- we've been budgeting for vacancy rate and stuff like that, but that, that seems like a high amount. Have, have these positions been filled?
Um. Any thoughts on vacant positions that are open, Tom?
I don't have, I can pull up the list if you'd like, but nothing, there's.
No, I, it just said, because of, because the Town Manager's Office, I think that's filled, right?
Yep.
Um, planning filled.
Uh, we have one, but that, one open, uh, interview process.
Uh, we have one, but that one open uh interview process started, should happen hopefully all around the next couple of weeks.
Okay, okay, I just was just curious where if if.
I mean, we do have some open positions, not as many as last year, um, like police was able to fill two of theirs.
Okay.
I think the library might have still um a couple open, obviously the town manager's office is filled. Um, highway?
We have one in Public Works and we have a longtime employee out right now.
Okay, so a couple vacancies there as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, any other questions on the expenditures? Okay. Um, the rest of the financials that you have in there are all of our special revenue funds and then also a breakdown of our capital projects at the end of the year. Um, if anybody has any specific questions, um, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise we can move on to um the items for your consideration.
I have a couple of questions on the capital projects. Um, just, I'm just kind of staying current, right, on the twenty, that things that I remember, twenty-three, twenty-four. So some are obvious, like performing arts center restroom, terracotta courts, those are still just waiting to happen. Um, and then the Meadowwood Barn Bridge improvements, yeah, I mean, I don't know, bridge improvements haven't happened.
The 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 bridges are essentially on on long-term hold right now, not critical in terms of they're not structurally deficient. Um, but when they went out to bid, there wasn't sufficient funding um within the grant that we'd be getting from the state. We're waiting for the state to reopen that grant. And the barns also went out to bid, the bids came in um higher than what we currently have. We've gone back to um state uh historic preservation office and said, okay, this is what it's gonna cost. Um, we're looking at whether we can restore one barn instead of two.
Okay.
And looking at options for that.
So those were grant-related delays, is that what you're saying, like?
Grant, grant and cost-related.
Okay, okay. And then just the other ones that I just wanted to touch on. Um, because, you know, we we every year that we go through the budget, we have to make decisions and say yes or no to these things. So I just noticed there was quite a lot that we improved in fiscal year twenty-four that are have not, that have not happened. Um, I'm just gonna throw out, you know, craft room renovation for forty thousand. We haven't done the crosswalk safety, the station street reconfiguration, like.
You wanna take them one at a time or do you want?
I I just wanna, because we get pressured and I mean, we were, I think you were, we were the only ones here in twenty-four, but we were, you know, we're told that these are so important and then they're not happening, is.
E- E- Eno Craft Room is probably about ninety-five percent done. Uh, we've been doing that a lot with some of our own internal forces, um.
So what happened?
They're building the cabinetry and so on and so forth right now.
So the forty thousand that we budgeted appropriated is not, just not gonna be used?
The the majority of that should be getting used, I don't know why it's.
Okay, so it just shows not.
Well, so this is the end of fiscal year twenty-four, so this is as of June thirtieth, so there could be bills, I know there's a lot of these, especially for parks and records, where the bills are in twenty-five.
So it's being used. Okay. Okay, that's. Okay, 'cause some of them sounded like I knew that they had happened, the park sign entrance and stuff like that. So you're just saying we don't see the twenty-five spend yet, obviously this is twenty-four. Okay, then you can just ignore my questions.
Okay.
Okay? Unless somebody else has, I mean, I'll wait till the next quarterly report, right, Amy, in the Board of Finance, I'll see, isn't that, yeah, okay. Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
Alright. So moving on to the year-end transfers, um.
We're on, we're on the next but, the next item, okay.
Um, I had given you an updated packet materials, which I'll take you through, um, there was one update to each of them. Um, but just starting on that first page, um, after the cover sheet where it has your scheduled changes in fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so our fund balance as of July first, twenty twenty-three, um, started about nineteen million, hundred and eighty-one thousand. And then you can see the total revenues with the budget variance of that three point nine that we went through. And then our expenditures coming under budget of that two million, that gets you your overall surplus of five point nine million. So this increases our fund balance to about twenty-five million, one oh five, oh sixty-one. And then there's a little chart down there that breaks down um like our non-spendable fund balance, so this is all of our prepaid expenditures. We know that those are being, or those were already paid out, so we have to keep that aside. We have our assigned fund balance, this is for our encumbrances at the end of the year where um the work was scheduled or started in fiscal year twenty-four, but it won't be finished until fiscal year twenty-five. So those um dollars have to stay assigned. And then everything else we can use is considered unassigned. So that's about twenty-four million, nine hundred and twenty thousand. And this leaves us at twenty point three per, twenty point three percent of fiscal year twenty-five expenditures. The current policy is that our general fund fund balance be anywhere from fifteen to seventeen percent of expenditures. So as you can see, we are over that number, which leads us into our first round of um the general fund closeout transfer requests. So that's the top page that I handed out to you a minute ago. With the updated, um, there's one updated item at the bottom of it. Um, on the second page of that, you'll see, um, at the top it says website internal control audit, IBPO. And then there's one um that was added, it's called the Parks Pension Reimbursement. So this is something that happened in fiscal year twenty-three. We had had our pension actuary try to break out the um cost per fund between the WPCA Fund, the Simsbury Farms Fund, and then everything else in the general fund. Um, there was an error in the calculation and the Simsbury Farms Fund ended up being overcharged by two hundred and five thousand in fiscal year twenty-three. This was reported out at the end of fiscal year um twenty-three, which was in fiscal year twenty-four. And the Board of Finance did a selling money to reimburse him fund, his fund for that error. Um, and I had just forgot to include it on um one of the transfer requests, so that's what that is. Um, the rest of the transfer requests that are here for your consideration are department requests for items that they would like to be able to utilize some of that five point nine um million surplus um in order to complete some of these um, these either tasks or product purchases, uh, things of that nature. Um, there is staff here tonight to answer any of your questions on any of these items.
Okay, a couple of things I do wanna point out before, I think we'll probably go through each one line by line.
Sure.
Um, but two things I wanna just point out to our board, and these also were reiterated last night. Um, the Board of Finance deferred to us, they're not going to weigh in on this, 'cause it came to them before us, it usually comes to them after. Us, I think, is just how our meetings felt, right? Um, so the additional budget mailer we did discuss, was discussed at last year's budget and as a transparency measure, um, it was discussed that we would do one this year um before the public hearing, so it would bring people out to the public hearing and after. Don't know why it wasn't included in the budget, but it was discussed that we would do it, so just wanted to point that one out, doesn't seem that controversial to do that. The other item, the Parks Pension Reimbursement, um, was pointed out last night at the Board of Finance meeting, that this was something that was planned for, we knew this was coming and that we would, we were told we would use year-end savings to cover that. So that two oh five was pretty much accounted for, um, that we would be doing it tonight. Um, so those two, I'm just gonna say to me are are really not controversial. But I think each of these other items are new new requests that are coming to the Board of Selectment tonight. Um, you know, the budget was a tough time and, um, you know, in the past, we try to be very careful about what we do off-cycle because we try to look at them in whole with the budget so that everybody in the public knows what we're we're looking at at that point in time. Um, so with that, I would like to guess go through um each of these items and then see, you know, what kind of consensus there is um from the board and if we wanna move forward on that item or not. Does that sound like a good way to proceed?
Yeah.
Okay, so the Ford computer software, um, would it be Tom Roy to speak to that?
Uh, yeah, as as you know, most of the vehicles in town are are Ford. Um, we have a bunch of cases throughout the year where something may be under warranty, we need to send it to the actual dealer to have the codes reset. The software would allow our mechanics to reset it, as much as say, oh, you can just bring it to the dealer and get it reset. When you think of something like a police cruiser, I can't have my mechanics drive that over to Windsor for them. They need to have a police officer drive that over, wait while the code is reset, if that is in fact what the issue is, and bring it back. Um, it benefits a number of different departments, it's a relatively small ask and it's gonna save us um significant time and staff time.
Okay, this is, I I do have just a general question.
Sure.
Like, why do these, wh- why couldn't some of these be done using departmental savings from the year? So this is a small amount and we could ask that for probably some of these other ones, but.
Yeah, and I think there's been some changes over the years, um, when we moved town manager form of government, um, with different goals. We basically, as I put it, we played it pretty straight, we spent the money we planned on spending throughout the year. Um, we ended up finishing in green this year, as we do most years. Uh, this came up as something that we would benefit, you know, like I said, all of these departments, figured it was a good ask.
Okay. Um, and and just, I guess my only question is, it it would, it 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 will save a lot, resource-wise, time, people, personnel?
It's two things, it it saves uh resource and time. We're not sending a police officer over to the dealership to wait while they get their car serviced. We're not sending our own staff over to the dealer to get a car or a truck serviced. Uh, and then the other one that where this comes into play as being a year-end piece is, originally we were gonna divvy it up and Tom Tversky's team was gonna pay some, Nick Bolter's team was gonna pay some, Tony Piazza's team was gonna say some, say some. I said, listen, this is a relatively small ask, it should be done by our fleet management, which is under Highway Department, and this is a good place to to put in the budget.
Okay, anybody have questions or thoughts on that?
I've got a more specific question. Why are we resetting the codes without repairing it? Something had to trigger the code.
Yeah, first off, I would tell you, our 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 fleet guys are excellent, they're not gonna let a a vehicle go out that's not right. Our police department, as part of their standard operating procedures, will not drive a car with a code on it. If if there is a yellow light on the dash, they bring it to us and we fix it. Uh, they don't drive vehicles that have that check engine light on. Um, if if they were resetting the code, the problem would be fixed. But if it was something where, um.
Oh, in other words, you would have fixed the problem prior to resetting the code?
Right, right.
Like oil change or something?
Uh, more if a code tripped, you know, the engine said something went wrong, you bring it in, our diagnostic team very quickly says, oh no, it it just set off this code, we reset it, turn the the vehicle back on, it doesn't come back on, okay, it was a glitch in the system. Kind of like on your computer, Ctrl, Alt, Delete, the problem's fixed, okay, good. They turn the computer back on on the car, all of a sudden that yellow indicator light comes on again, it's gonna take more time, then it's worth sending out.
Okay.
But it it allows us to knock down a lot of these ten-minute fixes without going through scheduling or repair, shifting vehicles around and such.
Alright.
Um, so I have a Ford, and we have one of those because I wanna uh tune the engine, so it fires differently.
Okay.
Do we need to train people on how to do the codes or is is this part of this cost?
Our 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 staff knows how to use the equipment.
Okay, so everyone's good with that?
Yeah. I don't know how to use the equipment, the staff doesn't.
I I Google it, so, but.
Do you wanna go through and get all the information first and then go through, or do you wanna take your consensus on this one as we as we go? What do you guys think? What are we thinking?
I think.
Can we do line by line, that way it's easier?
I think I should just go, yeah, like decide on this one as we go.
Okay. I I guess I would probab- uh, oh, the other thing I wanna say is each of these could also be supplements, they're all supplemental appropriations. So they don't have to be done tonight technically, correct? I mean, tonight it just saves them from coming back to us, but if it's not an emergency, we don't have to do it tonight, it could happen when the need is there. Um, I I would go for that one, just because if it's gonna save resources, time and energy um and put people out of uh having a police officer, a paid police officer drive to get his code changed is probably cheaper than than the amount to fix it.
Yeah, I I agree with that, I mean, it's a small amount for something that if we can do in-house and keep things here.
Yeah, no, I agree as well in the fact you kind of, it's multiple departments, but kind of all combined into one.
Okay. And the budget mailer, I think, everybody agreed that we kind of agreed to that and that it was for transparency, um, that we would get that out ahead of time. I don't know if anybody, I mean, I remember the discussion and they brought it up last night. Thoughts?
The budget mailer?
Um.
Yeah, were we good, are you all good with that?
We agree with it.
Okay, I didn't know if he was great, I'm sorry, sorry.
I'm agreeing with him. Agreed to the the budget, budget.
Okay.
The budget?
Budget, yeah, budget.
Okay, um, roof inspections, this is Public Works, um, this is a new ask.
Yep, this is, this is basically to do a comprehensive evaluation using thermal imaging to make sure the roofs don't have leaks or leaks that we haven't even seen yet. So eh, we could have a roof and some of these buildings in the center of town are fairly complicated in terms of their roofing structure. There may be a leak that it's getting up into the wood or into the insulation, you may not see it yet. This would help find it, this is about being prepared so we know if we need to do any repairs so we don't get into a condition of doing an emergency repair down the road. It's basically a good insurance policy.
Well, why can't this be part of the budget? Why is this, you know, sort of urgent?
Uh, we we could work this in 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 into the budget, this just gives us the ability to do this now, so we'd have the results. So if we did need any work, we'd be prepared for budget time.
So we could turn it down, no, I'm kidding, I'm just kidding.
Get some roof and cement, technically.
Um, I I'm I'm a maybe on that one, I don't, I don't really, um, like I.
Is this something that will become an annual request?
Uh, this would probably be something we would do every three or four years.
Three or four years.
Just cover all of those, sorry.
Uh, ta- town hall, Eno and the library.
And how's it done, is it done through?
It's a drone.
It's a drone that goes over?
Uh, if you think about the time, especially a building like Eno with a slate roof, the time it takes to get a person up there and scaffolding, if you put a person on that roof, you're actually endangering the roof itself, so, um, drones have just become commonplace in the industry.
But there's no leaks right now.
There are no leaks that we're aware of right now.
When was the last time this was done?
This has not been done in the past.
So potentially getting into the winter and icing.
That's correct. Th- this is, I'm not gonna say cutting-edge technology, but this is a newer way to do this. One of the ways this was done by the town and the Board of Ed in the past is we would hire or have a roofing contractor come out and they would give us an evaluation. I don't like that approach because they're not independent, they have skin in the game. I wanna hire somebody that's giving us a plain, dry report, dry, sorry, um, with the facts. And it allows us to then make good business decisions based on that and we're not beholden to any one contractor to do the work.
Okay.
Is it just the three buildings?
It would be for the three buildings, right.
The only way reason I would be potentially in support of it now is because head of the budget is only with the winter coming and if there is something that then becomes costly, much more than fifty-nine hundred dollars if there is a leak that's brewing, getting into the season, these are old buildings.
Right, and then, and then if they know, like, oh, we see this, and we're gonna need to put
The insurance they're doing this now might be beneficial.
An ask in the budget, so this project is gonna have to go on hold because we have to fix this roof instead.
That's correct, and not that I ever wanna say it's easier to put our head down and not look. It certainly would make the budget process easier, but I think it's a lot better to go into the budget process having the truth about what we have in terms of our infrastructure.
Okay, um, so are, would you call it a kind of a spend to prevent?
I I would, I I spend, spend to protect.
To protect? And what do people think on that one?
So I was initially against it, just to say that.
Me too.
But after Tom's wonderful presentation. Um, I get it, because what we're talking about with budgeting and financing for the town is always trying to forecast our expenditures. And for the allotment of money, it's gonna allow us to get, have insight of what's on the horizon and also what we can take off the horizon, to be frank.
Right, right.
So with that, I I've switched, I'm actually.
I agree with you.
Curtis, what are you thinking?
Uh, I think it's a good idea, I think preventive is great.
Okay. Okay, I I think the next one, I will just come right out and say I'm against the library additional part-time adult services. I thank Holly for her presentation, but we basically said at the budget we weren't doing any hiring and to to do a position at the year-end transfers, I just don't think that's appropriate when we look at all the people.
Lisa couldn't be here, so with your permission, I'll take the two library issues, uh, when whenever uh you like.
Well, I'm I'm saying I'm a no for the library part-time services.
So, originally I was um skeptical of this. Um, my only pro for it is that it was, um, it is an authorized position, it's not a new position.
Right, it's not new, it's not a new hire.
It isn't, it isn't.
Yeah, that's exactly the point.
It's just additional hours and it's not affecting benefits or.
Or the fringe, or or anything else, it's 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 not, doesn't increase headcount.
Fringe.
Does the library have, um, the twelve thousand already to account for?
Not in, no, no, although it's interesting because as as the finance director reported to you uh a few moments ago, part of the year-end savings came from a number of departments being under their expense side budget and the library was certainly one of those. So what you see sometimes with year-end savings requests, and I I went back and looked at what the boards have approved over the last few years. And it's not only emergencies that can't wait till later, it's sometimes the exact opposite. It's, it might be something that, you know, you got wrong in the budget, you didn't budget enough hours in the first place. And that's what this one is, it was under budgeted, the number of hours for that part-time person are not sufficient to get us through the end of the year. And that's why the library director made this ask. And I had the conversation with Lisa, we're not, again, not adding a person, it's not a position, there's no benefit impact, it's simply increasing the number of part-time hours.
Can I just ask what um took place that caused them to um kind of not allocate the time correctly? Um, is there something new there going on?
Great, great question, yeah. We were gonna do as part of the proclamation that this board recently approved to s- to uh celebrate the hundred and fiftieth birthday of uh of of the library system. Uh, we had invited Lisa to come and and give this board uh a a an overview and a brief presentation. And that got pushed back, so the board didn't have the benefit of that information. But I can share with you that the statistics at the library are quite astounding. But I can share with you that the statistics at the library are quite astounding. And the number of our citizens and visitors and everyone else that are using the resources at the library is sharply higher. It's it's actually a surprise to me, excuse me. Um, so that's why I asked Lisa a couple of months ago, please get a- all of that together and and come in and share it with the board. Because I think it's important, and and we're gonna need to be very diligent in terms of what we're budgeting there for next year, right? So I asked that question too. Right now, the ask would give us the hours we need through the end of next June. Uh, but we're gonna be doing some analysis as part of the overall budget work, Heather, to see whether, you know, there are some other efficiencies in the library budget that could pay for this. But right now, they need a little extra help, uh, and it's just part-time hours.
Is is there no one full-time that could fill in those slots?
No. No, in fact, we make good use of part-time people at the library. And at the at risk of, you know, alienating some of our collective bargaining groups, I can say that the use of part-time labor is beneficial to the town and to our taxpayers. Uh, because of the benefit or lack of benefit impact. So anytime we can solve a problem by adding some part-time hours instead of hiring. I think we've done exactly what the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen have asked us to do, and that's manage as well as we can. With, you know, as as little an expense side uh uh risk as as you would have. So certainly wouldn't be asking for a new position.
Is the passport service the same service that is offered at the post office?
Yeah.
It is, and it's interesting, you know, sometimes when department heads, and I I don't I don't mean any criticism, but there've been pl- plenty of examples of this in Simsbury over the years. I think when department heads make a request, they sometimes reach a little bit too far to justify the request, right? And I don't mean any disrespect to that. But the i- the issue is, I'm not attempting to justify it by the passport revenue. Number one, the passport revenue may not continue, which you may have seen as a spike in passport applications as people started getting back into traveling or whatever passport is good for ten years. That's why in the memo I sent you by email today, I shared our d- department head's comments and then mine, so we have a a a little bit of difference. I would say the answer to your question is that the need for the extra hours is simply because more people are visiting the library to do more things. And that's not just passport applications, that may be job searches, that may be Google, you know, whatever. I mean, our library provides so many resources that'd be hard for me to sit here and say with any certainty why we're seeing more people coming. Lisa could probably do that.
I know, I I saved probably a hundred bucks in.
You did too, yeah, right, and court copies.
Twenty dollars somewhere else for this notary there.
I can't, I use the notary service, I can't tell you how many times this year, and now the the most recent time that I had to call, you can't just drop in now. And find out when they're there, you have to make an appointment because they're so booked, notary. But on on the other side, I know that the library, to get a room at the library right now, it's almost impossible, and I've keep getting emails. That they are, you know, they're booking out, and then now they will only book three months at a time, but every room is is.
It it's very true, so with though, and and I will try to drill down on this with the with staff over the next month or two as we get into the budget, but but usage is up. And this is the only request that's had that that is being made for more labor, and it's in the part-time category, which I think is, kinda makes this a a reasonable ask.
Can I circle back to the passport, so?
Yeah, sure. I don't know why there's been an uptick, Heather, but.
I'm just curious why the library's providing a service that is already provided twice on the same street.
I think it's, I you know, I I'll let you ask that question of the library director when she comes. I think that, you know, and I'm not a librarian, but I will say that what I've seen over the last ten or fifteen years is that libraries in this country are trying to take on more. Whether or not others do it, so that the library becomes kind of a one shop, one one-stop shopping, and you can do a number of things at the library. Whether it's getting a notary, well, you used to get a something notarized, go to any bank and get it notarized. But you would would you, you don't go to the bank to get it notarized anymore, you're gonna get it notarized at a place where you have to go for some other reason. And and I think that's the same sort of uh thing that that would give me the best answer to your question. I could go to the post office and do it. It may be more convenient to do it at the library.
At different hours of operation as well.
And different hours, yeah, that's true. I know at the post office, you have to make an appointment, you can't just walk in and do it uh anymore, so.
So uh just to throw in my two cents, I'm actually not for this. We have increased taxes over ten percent in the last twenty-four months. I'm getting beat up by the constituents that you can't keep spending. This would be a great if we were in a boom economy or even a mediocre economy. I mean, we've all heard us all gripe about once we really saw the books, it was startling. And these are additional hours. And I just can't see, I know it's chump change compared to our big budget, but it's still additional hours. And I can't face some of the people on the street when they come up to me and go, oh, you spent some more. So I know it's year-end savings, but at my house, when we have year-end savings, we don't spend them. We put them in the bank and then we use them for projected plans on roofs or whatever. But my point is, um, it's not that I'm again, I'm proud of our library as a jewel, and honestly, I think it it, not to throw it out there, but it's better than any other library I've literally ever seen. But it's still an increase and I just, I'm having trouble, people are pissed, excuse the term, I know I'm not supposed to talk that way anymore. People are frustrated, and I think this will just taunt them that much more. I'd rather see something like this in the budget when we're making the decisions of where to appropriate the monies we do have.
Well, I think, you know, that's that's a bigger issue and that's something that I was planning to bring up at some point during this discussion, but. Um, I think that the amount of savings and I and I commend our teams and departments for um being conservative and and. Finding efficiencies and savings, but at the same time, there just seems to be, um. It just seems that it just year after year, it seems our re- our residents are being overtaxed. And it ju- doing a lot of the year-end savings, I find isn't as transparent um to our resident. Um, not being in the budget, but then at the same time, I understand allocating some. But I find the amount of year-end savings when we're having over three million dollars, you know, the oh. When we transfer this, that should lead to us, I would hope, in the next budget cycle, not having to raise taxes because we have an extra five million dollars.
I I I don't have a- any response for that other than I couldn't agree more. I think that it has for many years been the elephant in the room. And it is less the elephant in the room now after last budget and particularly my budget message included in the in my first town manager budget. Drawing attention to this particular issue and a number of others. And what I said as we budgeted for the year that we're now closing is that we need to look at the global issues, not the the number of pens and paper. You know, the paper clips that we're buying and spending, but take a look particularly at the revenue side, that's what I said. And I, at that time, just looking at the numbers, would have, at the back of the envelope, said, we're we're looking at a three million dollar surplus even as you raise taxes. And I think I said that. And at the end of the day, it's closer to six, even I am astounded. Now, there, I will say in deference to our colleagues at the Board of Finance, they did tremendous work, and this board did too, to right the wrong, as the finance director indicated. We're not gonna see that overage on the revenue side again, partly because of the state issue and and partly because of others. And and I think that to your point, Slut gets, it it is the number one issue that we need to be careful of as we go into the budget cycle. And just even what I would say is, you're right, but I I need to move you over just a little bit. The taxpayers are upset with the tax increase because they saw a tax increase and they, this is more than we can afford. Imagine if they saw a six million dollar surplus in the face of that. So uh you use the example in your own home, I use my my example to counter that in my own home. If I get a tax refund check from IRS for four thousand dollars, I might put three thousand of it into the bank and save it, it'd increase my fund balance. But I probably would also take my family on a much-needed or delayed vacation, we all make those decisions. So when you look at year-end savings, they're not all emergencies, they're things that the department heads would would want if they could get it. And so year-end savings is an opportunity to say, you know what, say DPW, for example, they come in, a six hundred thousand dollars under budget. And the ask is for twenty-six hundred dollars in spend for the thing, for the item that you just approved, for for example. The library is the same thing, that department had worked to the budget, managed the budget, came in under the budget, and contributed to year-end savings. And for that reason, we're encouraging the board to approve the extra hours. It's not a bonus or or anything for the department head who worked hard to meet the budget challenge, but it's it's for the whole community. Everybody goes to the library, is what she told me, and she would be here tonight if she could be, but she had a prior conflict, so she sent Holly. Again, it's a part-time increase of part-time hours. And some of the year-end savings, it's five point nine million dollars, some part of it needs to be approved. And and so far, we've approved three, one of which I didn't think would be approved, so thank you for that.
Yeah, so I just wanna say a couple of things in respect to that. It would have been, it could be better going forward if there's savings in the library, if you're saying they came in under budget, why was, why couldn't this have been included in that instead of being asked here?
You'd still need a transfer authorization, right, in some forms of government, like in my, in my prior, in my prior role, I could just transfer it on the on the authority of a chief executive officer.
I thought there was with the department.
But the issue is year-end transfers are requiring board approval, and that's what this is, it's a year-end transfer.
Well. But the question I'm asking is, I thought we had something where interdepartment.
I can take that, so this one in particular, um, for the part-time and full-time line items, because we built in the vacancy rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Departments are no longer allowed to use any of the savings within their full-time and part-time lines until we hit that vacancy rate. And then everybody has to come back for um their requests that utilize those savings, because it's not fair to one department that contributed to the savings. And then the other one, and then just to sparse out who saved this much and who gets this much. So um until we hit the vacancy rate, they're actually not allowed to utilize those savings anymore.
And so there is no discretion, and and I I I don't particularly subscribe to that myself.
I'm gonna, did the library, uh, what's the savings from the library? And also, is this, is this one person that we're a a part-time, you know, at what hourly rate, like what is it? Or is it kind of, you're piecing together a bunch of part-time positions and it's gonna cover those hours?
Believe there's multiple people that are in the same classification that can perform this job, so it's a number of hours.
So it's a, it's the number of hours, not like one particular person that you're looking to increase the the part-time hours for?
Correct. Correct. Correct, although one or two individual employees may get a disproportionate amount of this based on their ability to work the hours.
But it's still just not one, and we're looking to like.
Right, right.
Okay.
Fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah, so I think we need to move forward, I have one more thing to say, I'm still not in favor of it. I feel like a lot of these, the public has no weigh-in on this. I mean, if if this was during the budget, the public would see expanded roles for people, different hours, which we've done in the past, I believe. And we're doing it just with extra money that we happen to save. So um if we need to take a vote on that, I'm I'm fine with that, um, but I I I'm a no.
I'm a no. Anyone else?
And this, remember this'll, oh, never mind.
So is this, are you taking a vote?
Uh, yeah, you want me to take a motion vote, or do I, I'm taking, I could take a vote, um, I'm I'm just, we both said we're no, we're not in favor of it.
I'm leaning, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
We only need three.
So on the break, break.
You are the top.
No pressure.
Seriously, I said earlier, um, I I see value in 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 um services because I I use the services, so um.
Okay.
I I vote yes and no.
Okay, and it's still gonna go to the Board of Finance, um, so they'll know, I would hope they know who voted yes and no. Um, I'm just gonna say, what?
I'm all equal, I know.
Yeah, I'm saying it's gonna.
You're the chair, but that that's a little bit of an editorialization, I think.
I'm just saying. I'm saying it's going to the Board of Finance, and we heard last night what their thoughts were, so they may reverse the decision here, that's all, that's all I'm saying. Okay, the Ask Me contract, is that a required thing?
Well, I didn't know it was, but the the Board of Finance Chair indicated that it's mandatory, so I'll defer to to uh, yes, I think the answer is yes.
Okay, on the telephone system upgrade, this was planned for next year. Um, I heard last night why it was moving up a year, but if somebody wants to explain that, they can do that.
We'd be willing to withdraw that request, Chair.
Okay. Um, the door at the library entrance?
We'd be willing to withdraw that.
I would, the no on that one.
Right, the no on that too.
Um, the Simsbury Farms pickleball courts crack repairs, I know that Tom Tversky's here to um weigh in on this one, so I'd like to hear what he has to say. Um, if there's a safety hazard or a spend to save type of thing.
Sure, I mean, there's not, there's not a safety hazard at this time, um, but it's gonna get worse. I mean, we have a freeze, another freeze thaw cycle coming up this winter. I did put the request in last year, um, the interim town manager didn't include it in this list of appropriations at that time. So things have gotten worse since since last year. Uh, what it could amount to, this is public infrastructure, it's no different than the door, the roof at Eno Hall or the door at the library. So I'd hope you consider it in that fashion, not the, not differently because it's at Simsbury Farms.
I believe those were withdrawn, one of them, so you don't wanna, you don't wanna consider it in that fashion.
I mean, it's it's it, you you know, you open yourself, we open ourselves up to liability or closing a court down come springtime if it's if the court, if the court's not playable. We only have so many courts in town that can be used during the daytime by our seniors and other people who don't have kids in school or 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 don't have a regular work schedule because the school courts are closed during the day. So there's four courts up there, they are asphalt courts, this is something that's gonna happen when you have asphalt courts, these courts were built in two thousand sixteen. Um, we're hoping to replace them with post-entrenched concrete, which I advocated for at the, for the Terracotta Project. Uh, so we're four years away, but it's only gonna get worse if we don't do it, I mean, yes.
So if you do these repairs, how, like, I I hear what you're saying, that you could potentially have to replace them because something is gonna happen or close them down. If we do this repair crack now, how much time are we looking to potentially buy us before we have to?
You could have more cracks, I mean, we could fill these cracks next week, and we can still have more cracks next year, it's the nature of of where the water table is up there.
Like a driveway.
This keeps the courts playable for longer, you're still gonna be on that replacement schedule unless we keep, do more major crack jobs. And the court will be due for paint, uh, uh, we did painting, I think on two years, two years ago at this point, that's about a six, six to seven year job. So the courts will be due for painting about the same time that we're proposing re- uh rebuilding them, so we have that savings. You wouldn't vote, go repaint courts for forty thousand dollars if we're gonna replace them the following year.
How many years out are we looking at replacement if we'd like to get these fills?
Uh, I think either fiscal year twenty-nine is where I have it in right now.
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Would this, could this potentially push off the replacement if times are hard?
You certainly buy yourself more time, it's like, it's like filling cracks in your driveway, that, you know, if you keep up on it, you know, your driveway's gonna last longer. If you don't keep up on it, these things are gonna deteriorate more quickly. Uh, just like our, you know, our road paving program, you don't take, you don't take care of something, you can just run into a bigger problem down the road. I I I think for the amount of play those courts get and and the public asset that they are, sixteen thousand isn't a big, isn't a big ask. Honestly, I asked for twenty twenty-two-five because we had two quotes and the company we'd rather have have do the work is twenty-two-five. Um, the company with the lower quote is something, somebody we haven't used before, they're a fairly new company in Connecticut. But I'll take what I can get and at least we'll have, you know, we'll buy ourselves some more time and keep the courts playable hopefully next year.
Is this though, um, I mean, going forward, shouldn't maintenance and general repair just be a part of your budget in the budget?
I I agree, but we've we've, we run pretty, pretty slim budgets, um, on the parks maintenance side in particular, we try to, um, you know, offer you. You know, I'm not gonna, just like we said before, we're not gonna throw a sixteen thousand dollar repair uh line item in there if we don't need it, we're not gonna need this every year. This is, you know, it's gonna, it popped up, you know, the courts were built in sixteen, you don't plan for it to necessarily deteriorate that quickly, but this started happening in twenty-two. Um, when we first locked it, looked at it, kept a look, kept a, an eye on it, and it got bigger last year, so we put the request in. It didn't get, as we didn't have, we had a mild winter last year, so it didn't get significantly worse, you you know, an extra ten feet of crack fill probably is needed. We don't know what this one's, what this year's gonna bring, but you take that risk every season with that free, freeze and thaw cycle.
Have you asked for this in the past and it hasn't been?
I asked for it last year.
In the budget or in our budget?
It didn't, it didn't make it.
Same cycle.
Okay, so it didn't come to our budget?
Didn't come.
But it wasn't asked?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Um, do you consider, so you could, so it's really spending to save to keep the use of the courts?
I think so, and and again, it's town, it's town infrastructure, it's it's similar to our, to to the roof program that Tom's talking about. Granted, it's a little bit more money, but you know, you wanna keep a town asset viable and not have, and avoid further costs down the road if you can prevent it.
And the courts are used all winter because of the pickleball?
No, we don't allow the courts to be used during the winter, we lock the gates.
Oh, so you're doing it now?
We would hope, if if I, if I can get permission to do this, I I will call the company and get them out, try to get them out there as soon as possible, as I explained to the, to the town manager uh this afternoon.
Yeah, that's right.
This type of work needs to be done when the average daily temperature is fifty-five or above, so that the, so it seals correctly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're getting into that point where we're, I think we might have passed that that window, so what we would do is, first thing in in April, when those courts open up, we'll evaluate. You know, we open up the courts in March, if the weather's good, we'll evaluate whether they need to be, if there's any safety hazards or anything, need to be closed down. But we would schedule the work for April when the temperatures are at that daily fifty-five and above, so we could be first on the list at that point.
How long does it take to to?
Generally, it'd be down about a week.
Uh, okay.
Assuming we don't have more than what we're talking about now.
And how long does it take to cure for it to split?
About the week, yeah, they do it, you know, take two days and let it sit for three or four, five.
And the question, um, so why can't we till the budget?
Then, so what we did, so if we wait till the budget and you and you do approve it and the voters approve it. Where we're looking at July first, we have summer camps that use those courts, we have adult tennis lessons that use those courts, the adult pickleball court, people use those courts.
And make an health issue.
So we would be looking at next. So we would be looking at next fall, the earliest to get those courts down because we can't, i- i- if the courts are, are at all playable, we can't take them offline during the summer months, that's their busiest year.
Okay.
They, you certainly, there currently is no public safety.
It's getting close, there are a few, there's a few cracks that are opening up more than an inch at this point.
Yeah, I've seen them.
Yeah.
So when you say to average daily temperature, um, that's, I guess, because I'm just looking, just calling it out there.
You, you don't see, yeah, you don't see people crack fill their driveways during the winter time because it can't, it's not, that's not their public safety.
Right, no, but I'm just looking like, I'm looking at like the ten-day forecast legitimately, I'm like, oh, we're gonna have a bunch of seventy, seventy-six degree days, like, so.
That's, that's assuming that one of those two companies doesn't have works get, already scheduled next week, I, I'm not gonna book their time out when I don't have the funds.
Got it, got it. Got it.
What do people think?
I'm actually for it, it's preventative maintenance, it has inadvertent savings in the long term.
Yeah.
And you know, if you leave the crack exposed, the water's gonna get in there, it's not gonna get better.
Okay.
And it's not gonna stay the same, so.
Okay, I, I, I'm leaning towards um, being in favor of it just for the reasons that I've heard tonight.
I'm for it.
I guess it, you know, in.
How many favor, favor for the spend to save?
Okay, same.
Or prolong?
Yeah, I guess, I guess. I'm not the anti-pickleball guy, so I don't wanna be labeled that, but.
Or tennis.
I, I lean less towards it, but um, I'll, I'll go with group.
Okay.
Who's the anti-pickleball guy?
He is.
Cause I, I think that's the terrible one. So.
Um, so the library public, the library public furniture item, um, again, this came to us at the budget and we did not approve it, so.
I'll, I'll take this one too very briefly, uh, you, you're right, it's been cut uh seven times.
Seven?
Seven times, it's been cut for a number, number of years and uh, I spoke with Board of Finance Chair Havener on it and, and even she was aware that this had been cut for some number of years. So I'm assuming it goes back certainly well before my time. But let me try to frame this, I, I, I know that this is a, a, an uphill battle with the board and I certainly respect that. Let me tell you why it is, for the same reason that it's been cut every year, because it's an easy cut. And every now and then you get to something like this where it's been an easy cut and so it's cut, cut, cut. If ever you wanna do it, and I'm not saying you do, but if you do, you do it when you got a five point nine million dollar surplus. And the reason I say that is because if you tried to Wendy's question, why, why didn't you do it in the budget or why can't you do it in the budget or would it be better to do it in the budget? It'll never survive the budget. It, this is one of those things that you could only really justify if you had the surplus that we do, part of which came from the library. And the last thing I'd say is, this isn't to purchase the furniture, it's to design a, a multi-year strategic plan for the library. To protect our assets and, and allow, allow the library staff to come up with a rotation schedule for the replacement of the furniture. That smoothes out the cost of the, of replacing all the furniture at once over a number of years. Identifies that, those pieces that are oldest and most in need of repair. So without that strategic plan, we're just kinda shooting in the dark and, and that's really all I can say on it is. If you don't approve it now, you'll never see it again because we know it's not gonna be approved.
So I guess my question is, is with the, is, you're saying never about the five point nine million surplus, but we're still gonna have this five point nine million or seven million surplus when we go into next budget because it's being carried over, but we're not spending today.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can see what else the library's asking for in other areas.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the surplus isn't going away tonight.
It, 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 it would not, I can, I can say in all confidence Heather, that if you fast forward to January, when I'm looking at the library's budget. I'm not gonna put this in. And the reason I'm not gonna put it in is because what we all know is despite this surplus, we are in a significant difficulty with respect to next year's budget, both in terms of CNR and in terms of operating, right? And, and while we're on the subject, I just wanna share with the board that I had a department head meeting recently about bonding. And I'll remind the board that the Board of Finance guidance, the most recent guidance to us was, and we did this as part of last year's budget approval. Was that bonding by the town of Simsbury should be no more than ten million dollars every two years. You'll all remember that, that can be five million this year and five million next year, or ten million this year and nothing next year. That was the guidance just a few months ago. My direction to staff is that next year we're gonna bond no more than one point five million. That's coming from your town manager, not the Board of Finance, that's my direction to them. And most of that, if not all of it, will be Mr. Roy in Public Works to maintain the quality of our roads that we, that we've spent so much money on already. So some assets have to be protected, as we just talked about, if you don't fix the pickleball court, it's just gonna be broken more next year. So I, as, as you're struggling on whether or not to approve these very de minimis numbers. That represent zero point two-four percent of the five point nine million dollar surplus. I want you to also know that your town manager is directing staff to reduce the expected bonding by three point five million. Over and above what the Board of Finance has told us we could do. So I get it, your department heads get it, but this is one of those things where if we don't do it for our library, it'll never be done.
That I don't understand because, I don't understand that because it could be a supplemental appropriation at any time.
But it's never gonna rise to the level of things.
But it sounds like, then it sounds like it's not that critical if it's never gonna come back to us.
It's critical because it never reaches the critical, each year you've got your, your, your threshold above which you can't get budgetary approval. Uh, and that number changes, that threshold, I'm not confident that I could ever get this approved absent a five point nine million dollar surplus. And, and the fact is, is that the record's clear, it's been rejected time after time after time.
So we don't have an asset list of our furniture?
Not at the library, as far as I know, we don't, I don't believe we do.
Somebody down there have the time to make an Excel spreadsheet? I mean, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars a buck a person in town, I don't see people in town throwing in a buck each.
It's, it's the protection of the assets in the library.
It's still other people's money, you know, the, it's honestly eighteen five hundred dollars for an Excel spreadsheet, how many pieces of furniture are there?
You know, I, I, I hear you.
You know, I picked on Ray, sorry Ray, didn't mean to pick on you either, but anyways, my point is. When you divide the number of pieces of furniture by eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, how hard is it to populate a spreadsheet? I just, it seems egregious to be frank.
I think if you've got antiquated furniture, say, in one of the conference rooms here in this building, and I won't say which one. But it's not viewed by the public and nobody's ever asked for new furniture in there and it's twenty-two years old, right? Doesn't matter because it's usually used by six or seven town employees and it is what it is, we're not coming to you asking to replace that furniture. The library is a jewel in town, it's one award after award after award, and I don't agree that a dollar a taxpayer is something that should be rejected. The issue is the one that was raised by select woman gets, why do we have a five point nine million dollar surplus? And, and I know we won't have one next year because the attention has been drawn to it and, and numbers have been changed. Uh, and we are appreciative of that, but we have that surplus.
Then I'd rather see a request for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars worth of furniture to make a list of what we should buy.
You've got the request. We don't wanna buy it, we don't wanna spend a hundred thousand on all the furniture, we wanna inventory it, we wanna identify what needs to be, be replaced when. It's no different than the, than the fleet of police vehicles. We have a, what is the word Tom, I'm using for the fleet management where you replace it every few years, help me out there?
It, it's just keeping a constant balance and we also try to avoid fleet creep where we have too many vehicles.
And do we do that with all our furniture, is there ever, is there a plan to replace furniture every twenty-two years?
We have absolutely no replacement of furniture.
No replace, what's the difference between a hundred thousand dollars worth of furniture and a hundred thousand dollars worth of police vehicles? You've got a management plan for one and no management plan for the other, it doesn't matter what the individual wants.
Police vehicles is safe.
Safety.
It, it is safety, but, but I'm talking about the value, the value of the asset, right?
There's.
So cumulatively, you've got assets, then this is why Steve's right, you know, we should inventory, even the furniture, I don't dispute.
Steve, I'll do it with a chamber for seventy-five hundred.
I'm sold, sold.
That's the answer of the night.
And I'll do it by the end of the year.
We have to kinda move on.
It's about a ten-year.
But that underscores honestly on my hand, we'll move on, the eighteen-five just seems a little harsh for a spreadsheet.
If, if it's for a ten-year strategic plan and you annualize that, Steve, like you and I have talked about.
That's, the director should be doing that.
I would say that.
If, if you annualize it, it's, it's eighteen hundred over the next decade.
Who's doing this study?
It can't be done internally?
Yeah, who's doing this study, so we were hiring somebody to?
Not really. You would get a vendor to come in and do it, there's, there are companies out there that look at it and say, what, what needs to be replaced, when, how often, all of that stuff.
Okay, so I.
Can, uh, can we take some of these four hundred hours we just approved?
Yeah, the part-time.
And have the summary towards this.
Right.
Well, thanks.
Yeah.
That was Heather's joke, I heard it.
I don't, I don't think, I think that's, that's, the, the part-time hours are face-to-face with the community member, actually staffing the desk.
I know, I'm going to, I'm going to.
As opposed to, you know, going around doing the.
So I, I, we're gonna, I'm gonna take a vote here, I, I, I'm gonna be a no and I, I, you know, you can say whatever you want, but we've had multiple times where the libraries come to us for sort of frivolous things and if this was so critical, this should have been an ask along the way. And I will say that here and if it comes in the budget and we can look at it with other things, then that would be more appropriate, in my opinion. So, so I'm gonna say, I mean, it sounds like a great project, but um, I'm gonna see.
I, I will be honest, we had the, because we've had the bike come, we had the, um, the vending that we did not approve to come to Terrafill, so there have been sort of these asks and it seems like maybe this would have been.
Excuse me. Yeah. Better use of funds.
Better use of funds than some, than the other ask.
I, I think in terms of those asks, you're right, this, this has just never, never gotten through the budget process, so you know, it, it might have, it should have more legs in a, um, year-end savings request in the face of a, of a pretty big surplus. But it obviously wasn't working during the budget process because I didn't cut it, the board's cut it.
Okay, I'm gonna be a no, just to keep it moving, we have executive session, I have to say it.
Yeah, we do. Hypnotic.
Um, I'll, I'll say, I'm gonna say no, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a necessary thing, but um.
Okay, so I know it's not done. Done.
It's done, Curtis.
Okay, um, the signage, um, I, I don't know more about this, I, I know a little bit, I heard last night, but is anybody, um?
I'm a no, so.
I think it should come to the budget.
Yeah, me too.
I'm a no, this is not a good friend.
Oh, no, alright, cool.
However, I would like a clarification that the north does not have a welcome sign, it has gone to the point of dilapidation, it was removed. So there's actually three signs we can talk about at the budget time would be more appropriate, three.
Two.
The airport, the Pinchot Sycamore and the northern gateway to town.
I thought, I thought we just said the northern gateway's been removed, the northern gateway was replaced with one of the stone pillars.
There's a stone pillar there?
Yep.
This is, let's keep things moving, bunch of time I look forward to this discussion.
High tractor's fine, high tractor.
And the pillar in Terrafill that we've been talking about, that we've been waiting for, that hasn't happened.
Four, I, do I hear five?
No. Okay, the, the, somebody can explain that the permits that are here, is that you, Tom?
That'd be me, that'd be me.
Okay, cause it said it was, I know it's a new state thing, but does it have to happen now, what's the deal?
Uh, originally when we were approached by our vendor, DEP did what DEP does and they moved very quickly and they said they wanted this thing done right away. Um, at this point, it looks like they're relenting and we would be able to do this through the normal budget process. If there was a, an interest in, in, in doing this now, it would just put us ahead of the game, but this can easily go through the normal budget.
Okay, so then can we just table it?
It's a no, but.
It's a budget?
I appreciate your, you know, transparency.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Um, the, the website item, um, up here, so.
I'll take that one, it's just a, a, and slight change to what I told the Board of Finance yesterday, uh, last night. Rick went back and, and got some clarification with him, so the ask is forty and that includes the entire thing, including the ADA component. So last night at the Board of Finance, I, I had indicated and believed it to be true at the time. That it would be forty thousand plus about five or six thousand, uh, to, for the second component, which we were gonna budget for later. Uh, as it stands right now, the forty is all in and the issue here is, is if you approve it, we could start now and if you don't, we'll, you'll see it in the budget in July. And we won't be able to start till July.
Uh, I have a que, just a question because I had initiated, um, talking when Lee was here about cleanup of old crap that's out on the website, just as a starting point.
Yep.
Um, not even a new website, just getting rid of our archiving old data. And um, he said he was reforming this committee that.
Rick has, Rick has started reforming our employee web group.
Which was like, that started back then, so i- i- if it's up to me, I would rather like not do this here and see a project plan and proposal for what exactly is included in the new website. What cleanup work's been done to date and then since it is a supplemental appropriation, we could either, if it's critical to do sooner than later. Bring it back with more details or we wait to the budget, cause we did not include it in the budget this year, so I don't know. It wasn't presented there and that was an option, cause we knew that that, what is that group called, Tom?
Employee Web Group.
Employee Web Group, interesting. Um, and have they made any progress on what could be cleaned up, um, to date?
Yep, they've been meeting, um, in, I'm just in the town manager's office, we've gone through and cleaned up some stuff and updated old, um, board of second go, so your new ones. Um, and so departments have taken it, boards and commissions have taken it, um, but it is just, there's a lot of old stuff on the website, so.
Is there, is there a task list of all the things that we need to get rid of and?
I don't, I don't think there's a, we've gotten rid of page A, B, C, D list. Um, I could certainly ask, but I don't think they've been writing down each page they've gotten rid of.
And what it, I, I guess, you know, as a, I just would rather see, I don't feel like to the public, this is kind of a big item. We all know that the website has a lot of stuff out there that could get cleaned up, um, and improved. Um, but, um, and I know it's a goal of ours, so it's a, it's a tough one, but I still think that either it should come to the budget or if it's, if there's a more baked plan for this to bring it back to us for an appropriation. But that's, that's just my, my thinking on that, so I'm open to other people or if we wanna move it forward, people can.
If I could just add that, that what you have is the same forty thousand you'd be presented with in July. We would ask for more or less than, it's just a question of do we wanna do it now or later. I would put it in the town manager budget and I'm pretty confident the board would approve it in July. Why wait when we could do it now is my, my only feeling, I'd rather get it done, uh, now than, than not be able to start till July.
Anyway, I'm sorry, remind me again who's tasked of actually implementing it?
So we would have an outside, you know, this is, would be, remain on Civic Plus, and we're using Civic Plus now.
Right.
It would be Civic Plus Plus and, uh, you know, our IT director would handle the, the, uh, conversion. You, you get to the point, I think, with website design and redesign that, do you wanna spend a lot of resources cleaning up something that you're gonna pull the plug on eventually, right? And so, um, it was one of the few areas Lee and I weren't necessarily in lockstep on. I think that, just speaking for myself on this, that the assignment of an internal group tasked with finding deficiencies in the website was really a red herring for not doing what we should do, which is replace it, it's old, it's antiquated. It's not the best practices, we've identified numerous other towns that have better websites. It ties into everything that we wanna do for economic development, it's very visible. And I think you would approve it seven months from now or eight months from now. So respectfully, I'd like to get started on it, we have the resources to do it, if the board approves it and the Board of Finance agrees. We could get started on this right away and, and by July, we'd have a new website.
What's the cost of the?
The forty's all in.
But that's, it does not include the?
It, it now, it now includes the ADA.
So forty is everything from brand new website?
It is.
Maintenance fees.
There being an annual maintenance fee that would be roughly the same as what we're paying now. I talked to Rick about that today, he doesn't imagine that it would be any more than a three or four percent increase over, over budget. So it's forty inclusive of the ADA that makes it compliant and I'm not an expert on that, you might know more than I do, but uh, so that handicapped persons could access the website, right? So as I indicated for.
They can't do that.
I, uh, the original plan was to come to you for forty in, in year-end savings to start the process. And the ADA compliance piece would be funded in the budget and we'd do that later. But because of some good work by Rick, who talked to the vendor just today, uh, they're saying, look, if you can get it done, we've got the, the, the capacity to move on it, it's forty all in.
So is this, um, website group, like who's, who's advising the outside company, what we need to have on the website, what the design?
So that's where the benefit of the internal group really does come in, if, if we can switch the operation of the internal group to being one that is recommending what upgrades, then it would be much better use of the, of our employees' time as opposed to, uh, the, the different task, which is, you know, go through the old website and, and i- i- identify what needs to be taken down, but Tom, do you wanna speak on this, you've been working on that group, I know the internal group is what, about eight people?
I, larger, I mean, there's multiple departments, um, every town, every department's represented. Bi-monthly, quarterly.
So the group is giving Rick and you input on, on, on what exactly? What, what is, what is the group doing, identifying what needs to be changed on the current website?
Yeah, and, and part of it was also training too, like, so we've, there's been some staff turnover, so there's been, so it's a way to train how to actually use the website for more than just uploading the behind-the-scenes stuff. But we can certainly move it over to what should be moved over to in the new website and what need can stay behind.
And Franklin is actually on the group now, just thinking of, Franklin, do you wanna just comment?
Yeah, respectfully, I think any dollar spent toward this is a, a dollar well spent for the town. The website is not just our website, it is a marketing tool, it's how we are, how we present Simsbury to visitors and residents alike.
The website is not just our website, it is a marketing tool, it's how we are, how we present Simsbury to visitors and residents alike. Um, in, in the employee web, web group, there's upwards of, uh, ten, fifteen, um, individuals, uh, and staff from. All other, all the departments there collaborating ideas with the website redesign, uh, there's multiple new features that can be implemented. Um, things to make it easier to edit the website and to arrange how it looks like from the staff end, making it more easier on that, that way. There's also ability to add newsletter features, such as the public safety newsletter that we worked on in-house, that, that would be more streamlined. And allow other boards and commissions to make their own newsletters. There's also an additional feature where individuals can pay taxes directly from the website. I've heard, uh, we, I've heard in my role as management specialist of the difficulty in, in paying taxes, and how it takes you to a different portal with the website redesign. There's an ability, uh, uh, added feature to be able for a resident to pay directly, so that would be more streamlined. And overall, if you look at other towns like Woodbridge, Newington, and Mansfield, their websites, when you look at them and enter, and, and turn on the homepage, it's inviting, it's warm, it's welcoming. Simsbury with all of its access, assets, there's a multitude of information on the website that overwhelms the reader. And with the website redesign, Civic Plus can completely transform it and make it so that it is a beautiful product, that it's easy to navigate. And a much improvement from our current website, so I think every dollar spent toward that would be a dollar well spent.
Um, he's our salesperson.
Yeah.
Is Franklin still?
He, he tells me every day.
Have we looked at any other platforms, though? Are we, are Civic Plus all the only thing that we're going with? Are we getting an RFP? Are we looking at different, I know Manchester at one point changed to a new platform over the last couple of years.
Yeah, there's always other platforms. Um, I believe Rick has looked into it, and it's just, there is. Going just from the new model of, of what we currently have, it's just the migration will definitely be easier. Um, I can certainly follow up with him and ask if he has, but I have confidence that he has looked into other companies.
And just like, I, I, just like I asked Ray and the EDC, is there a plan that, you know, the, the difference of doing it here versus doing it in the budget? During the budget, we'd have a project sheet explaining exactly what we were doing, you know, who we were using, what kind of timeline we had. Here, we just have a blurb saying we're gonna do, do a new website. So, so that's my, that's just something would be helpful to have some more clarification on what exactly is included and. Who we're using, what we're doing, but.
Are there ongoing maintenance costs once this is implemented?
Uh, there's an annual, uh, licensing or, or user fee that I was referring to earlier, that we're paying now with our current website. It would be slightly higher, but not, not significantly higher, so there is always an annual cost for a website. Um, I, I, I think just to Franklin's point, that some of the efficiencies that he's mentioned. Have some intangible savings, but not so much that I'm gonna hang my hat on it. I think it's a question of whether you wanna do it. And if you do wanna do it, then, then, looking at the resource allocation, I'd rather do it now. Than starting, you know, next July with who knows what other priorities we're all gonna have. Seven months from now. I do know that, that staff with this internal group already in place. Has the capacity to, 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 to knock this out of the park, get rolling on it. It makes a difference to them whether it's approved now or in July.
So you're ready to start tomorrow? Is that what you're, are we ready?
Let's gotta get approval from Board of Finance. Well, at, once, we can start the day after the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
Um, would we, could we get, um, um, an actual project description for this item?
If you approve it, we'll have one tea in forty-eight hours. We'll have one tea before the Board of Finance.
No, I'm saying it's not important to do, that's my point, is it's just that we're doing it here, you know, because we have five point nine million dollars, which. Normally, this would be a budget item, could have been a budget item this past year and wasn't, you know, for whatever reason.
I mean, respectfully, we do have less time a- as, as an organization to put together year-end savings requests. The budget process takes months. But you, but we do this within six or seven days from the finance director telling us what it is, and so that's why we don't have. You know, complete, you know, RFPs out and everything else, but we can certainly, we'd love to get the board whatever you need to feel comfortable, and we wouldn't. Spend a nickel until you were, but we would like to get your support so we can move on to the Board of Finance, because if it dies there, we don't wanna do the work. I'm not sure I wanna have the internal group of fifteen employees spending a lot of time deciding what comes off an old website either. I'm not, I'm not feeling the love on that project. Lee, Lee and I talked about that.
It's not normal maintenance, though? I mean.
No, you know what happens is with websites, there's a, and there's a term for it, I'll just go say website creep. There isn't this concerted effort to take off old information and, and to make sure that links are fixed and so on and so forth, and. It's no disrespect to our wonderful IT time, team, but there just hasn't been enough, enough time in the day to do it. And you've got a website that has a lot of broken links and a lot of stuff on there that you wanna clear up, and. We would love to do it, but we need your funding support in order to do it. I'd love to be able to be, you know, in front of you next summer and say, hey, it's done. And I can't do that without your approval tonight.
So, it'll, it'll be done by next summer? You got a date? I mean, I just.
It, it, it will be done well before next summer if you approve it. No, not at all, it'll be done by my birthday.
Shouldn't be done until December.
So, um.
That's where you ask, when my birthday, right?
When is it?
That's all you're getting.
May nineteenth. Thank you for asking.
Um, so it, it was one of our lower hanging fruits on the Board of Selectmen goals. It is also on the town manager's goals. It's something that we are going to approve.
Yep.
Since it is something that is not broken, but broken, I, I am for moving this up and just. Moving it forward. It's, it's gonna be a no-brainer, so why wait?
And I agree, like, why, like, if we have the manpower and, and, and resources to do it now, we don't know what next July is gonna look like. We don't know next fall is gonna look like. Let's get it done, and we can utilize it for EDC and, and, you know, tourism and all kinds of marketing reasons. I agree, 'cause I, that website to me is treacherous, but.
Although the, one thing I'd say is, um, getting a new website doesn't prevent the same links from being broken in the future. So just to be sure, we have a process to be sure that, we can look at how we.
Maintain it.
Maintain it, so.
Yeah, good point. Yep, understood. I get it.
That is a good point. Because it'll just happen again, if we don't maintain it properly.
You're right. We'll make sure that doesn't happen, as long as I'm here.
Okay, what's this, right, what do you guys think?
Um, yes.
Um, yes. Okay. Um.
Thank you.
What's the next?
Internal.
Oh, didn't Amy, didn't you say you were tabling that one last night?
Yeah, we don't have time in the spring.
Yeah, she, that was really, they were very happy when you did that last night. That was a nice little tip. Um, so the, the IPBO contract, um, I think this was mentioned last night, too. We don't really know the full amount. Right? So the board is, they mentioned just doing an assignment, so how does that differ from what we have here?
W- we can withdraw it for now. I think we're close to, um, uh, a settlement with five EPOs, so. And this number, uh, isn't a definitive, so I'm, I'm, uh. I think we'll withdraw, we'll, we'll, yeah, let's withdraw.
With that route? Okay.
Yeah, I think, I, I will say that we did signal to both boards that we were, uh, hopeful that we'd have an agreement with them, and, uh, and nothing's changed, so we.
This is almost as bad as the budget. Sorry, it's easier, there's nothing.
Right, and the parks reimbursement is a must do, so yes.
We already talked about that one, so, so, what else do we have to do, Amy? I just have to read motions?
Yeah, you just have to take formal action to recommend those items to the Board of Directors.
Do you have all the, you have it all documented? Um, can I do them all together?
Sure.
Well, move effective October fifteenth, October fifteenth, sixteen, twenty twenty-four. To approve the general fund year-end transfers, um, as described tonight, approved tonight. In accordance with the general fund closeout transfer request document. Move effective October sixteen, twenty twenty-four to rollover open encumbrances totaling twenty-five, six eighty-four. And appropriate the funds in the fiscal year twenty-five budget in accordance with the open purchase order detail report. Move effective October sixteen, twenty twenty-four to unassign the fiscal year twenty-three general fund. Fund balance assignment of sixty-eight, three nineteen, and reassign the twenty-five, six eighty-four of fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-four for open encumbrances. Move effective October sixteen, twenty twenty-four to approve the year-end budget transfers in accordance with the general fund budget transfers. Budgetary basis document, and move effective October sixteen, twenty twenty-four to approve the capital transfers. In accordance with the capital transfer request document.
So left, second.
Any discussion? All those, all those in favor say aye.
Well done, Wendy.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, feel better.
Better. Thank you, feel better all night. Okay, can we, can I make, um, a request that when we get to the budget, can we have the breakdown of the year-end savings from the past? Three to five years, and.
Three, I have, yeah.
And where they came from? Yeah, I actually have that. Okay, thanks.
Did you? Where, where it came from?
Like.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
See where the consistencies are and staff vacancies.
Okay, bye.
Thank you, feel better, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you for that.
So this one, the amount of the town code, bye, Ray.
Thanks, Frank.
Larry, you're an impressive group, I have to say. What you labor through, through your towns.
Okay, okay. Um, so, there's a resolution, so basically, this is approving the solid waste thing that we already didn't have a public, we had the public hearing on. It's, it's, uh, I'm adding a whole section to the ordinance to support the, the capital. The CROG solid waste stuff. Um, and there's a resolution attached here that has yays or nays, which is why we're doing this in this manner. I don't think I have to read the resolution, do I?
No, just note the, uh, one absence, if you want for the record.
Well, you guys noted, right? I'll say five, okay, so we'll take a, we could take a voice vote, so.
Name, name vote, yeah.
Okay, so, um.
Are we able to ask questions?
Oh, yeah. Sure, sure.
Well, you said that after Tom left.
I know, we already talked about this.
I may, I may not know the answers, I'll try, I.
Um, I was just, I guess my question is, what, what has really changed here from what we were doing before? Um, you know, and is it, are we just regionalizing? Is that really what's happening?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the advantage to regionalizing?
Wendy, you wanna take that? You were in that meeting, I think, before I got here, Wendy.
I think Tom is coming.
Tom was there too. I mean, this Tom was there too, but.
He's already in the parking lot, unbelievable.
Yeah, Tom.
They're talking regionalization, Tom, we need to.
Alright.
So I'm just curious with the solid waste, what exactly, um, are the, are there any changes to what we're already doing outside of the fact that we are now regionalizing?
We, we have been part of this for ten years.
Okay.
CCSWA since it, it founded. Um, the, the whole key is, e- even this small group of towns, it's hard to move the industry. Um, and in Connecticut, we have a solid waste crisis. DEP wants us to essentially recycle to levels that are not seen anywhere in the northern hemisphere, but even if we do that, I'm not, that's no exaggeration, Mark. That is the level that they think we can get to. The problem is, no matter what you do, you're still gonna have some level of trash, and you need to have something to do with it. So, within CCSWA, we're talking about what can we do to get better grants? What can we do to help advocate and push this problem forward at the legislative level? Uh, just a couple of years ago, we were bringing all of our trash to Hartford. We had a trash-to-energy plant where the trash was burned. Um, that plant was allowed to fail.
Is it Camara?
That was Mira. Yep, so now all of that trash is getting loaded on train cars and going out to Ohio and Pennsylvania. And these old strip mines is being disposed of there. There are some questions on the ethics of that. They have an environmental disaster with these strip mines. Our trash comes with money to help fix the problem. However, anywhere along the way, those states that the trashy, the transports through could put fees. Or the tipping fees could go way up in any of those facilities. So we're not in control of our tipping fees as a community or as a state. Uh, one of the things that we're hoping to advocate for, I'm hoping to advocate for, is thirty years ago, fifty towns got together and built that trash-to-energy plant. Why can't we do that again? We need to start planning for that now, and this organization as well, puts us in a place to do that.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. I was just wanting to, um, to hear from you on, you know, the advantage of, of doing this, so thank you.
Did you mention Croc, Capital Region Council of Government in there?
I did not, 'cause CCSWA is partnered with CROG, but it is a separate organization.
Okay, okay. Um, so that was what the meeting we went to, was that they were talking a lot about shared services, and they have assets, not necessarily for this, but they have resources. If we pull stuff through them, that they could help benefit the municipalities, so.
The, the staff for CCSWA is, we pay for hours of CROG staff time. And we also get the benefits of having Matt Hard as Executive Director and Paulie Yoder, they weigh in. Um, so we, we, we get a lot of horsepower for the, it's less than, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars a year that we spend to be members. Uh, but the potential for grants right now is huge, and it's making sure that we're part of a forward-thinking group on this big regional issue.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Quick question on the, the trash energy?
Yep.
I, I have a good friend who works for Weeds Management, that, like, that's what he does, like, so they burn to get energy.
Yeah.
Um, would you be looking to compete with, like, another, like, a, a company, and like, start your own regional trash energy company, or?
Uh, right now, there's not enough capacity in Connecticut to handle all of the waste that the state generates. Um, so the idea that Connecticut's, uh, DEP solid waste plan says we shouldn't have trash leaving the state borders, doesn't work until we come up with capacity. So, I am all in favor of developing our own trash-to-energy plant, our own anaerobic digester, which would take organics and make it into energy. Challenge is gonna be citing it. Certainly, no, no communities really wanna have something like this, um, in their backyard. And, and that's why, again, it needs to be done on a regional level. Um, one of the things that was always part of the issue with, um, CRA, is there was a benefit to Hartford of about seven million dollars a year. Yes, we're bringing our trash to the city. Yes, you're dealing with that component in a portion of the city, but it comes with seven million dollars. Um, Manchester has a landfill that's closing. There are some options. Uh, but I do think we need to come up with a solution for where we can't bring the stuff we can't recycle our way out.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, um, so, I think we're gonna go with option A. Just put that out there. Um, and, um, as for motion effective October sixteen, twenty twenty-four, to amend Town Code Charter one thirty-three solid waste. As presented, which shall be effective twenty-one days after publication in a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsbury. Further move to authorize a summary of the amended ordinance be published. And finally, move to authorize Town Manager Mark Nelson to execute the resolution as presented. To repeal and adopt amended bylaws and enabling ordinance of the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority. Um.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? Um, so, uh, we, I'll recognize that Se- uh, Selectmen Beal is not here to vote, so, um, I'd like to take a vote for the rest of the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Maxudas, Antonio, Getz, Looney, and Yisley are all. Officially, if I have to call them out, I'm doing it. Make it official, as that sounds.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Tom.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Okay, see ya, Tom. Okay, so the next item, um, this is a resolution authorizing the Town Manager and Director of Community Planning to apply for a certificate. Affordable Housing Project Completion, um, for the Connecticut Department of Housing Commission. Um, so if you guys have, George presented kind of this option of the housing unit equivalency points to, to see where we stand. As a town, um, to get a qualification to be exempt from eight thirty G. I'll let you talk anyway, I'm just babbling here. But, um, the point I wanted to make here was, it came to us when George did his presentation. And, um, the suggestion made was that it should go to our SHPAK, because that's why we designed that board and commission. Um, to, to weigh in, and they voted, uh, to present this resolution to us tonight. Because that's something that they wanna do sooner than later and not wait till their report in January. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to George, or unless there's questions on this. Um, I mean, I, I've been through this, I don't know how much everybody else has been through this at the SHPAK meeting in, in our last meeting, but, um. There's questions? Are you just here for questions?
I, I'm here, uh, at your pleasure, um, uh.
Can you go get me a coffee? Sorry, George.
But, but I would just, I would, um, I guess I would, I would, I would s- simply, um, s- stress one particularly. So, the cer- the Certificate of Affordable Housing Completion, if granted by the state. Simply means that eight thirty G affordable housing applications are subject to our local zoning rules and process. Today, you know, under the state, state-enabled mandate, those kinds of projects receive the benefits of not having. Uh, of being able to really locate anywhere they want, and, um, you know, the process, the decision-making process is kind of flipped. So it's harder for a zoning commission or a planning commission to justify, um, a, a denial or approval with conditions or those kinds of things. So, it is, what it is not, it is not a moratorium on residential housing projects in the community. It is, it is, it is simply, for a four-year period, if, if we get approved, those projects. Will have to meet our local zoning regulations, so we will still encourage positive outcomes, and we will still encourage those, those eight thirty G projects with, with thirty percent. But we, but with that, we locate them in places that our policies and our regulations direct them.
Okay.
Just for clarification, George meant to say affordable housing, I think, not residential housing. We would still welcome affordable housing projects.
Uh, we, we would recommend, we would, uh, we would.
With open arms.
Welcome, we would, we would welcome projects that meet our, our, our rules and regulations. It's a better way to say it, right?
Okay, this, um, and anybody have comments or questions on this?
I, I know, I'm probably gonna get killed for this, but.
I know, I'm probably gonna get killed for this, but my one hesitation with this is that with zoning, we're not. Through the process I've seen, um, a lot of things come up and it gets, they get shut down. And there's nothing to hold them to the fire, because everyone's got a different opinion of, you know, if you want open space, if you want certain housing. People want more dense house, less dense housing, affordable housing. And without some type of regulation, I I feel like we're gonna be stuck in the same exact position going forward and um. So yeah, so that's the, that's my, that's my hesitation, is that one, it allows us to um hold a little bit to the fire to for zoning. To approve more things, more projects, to get them completed, um, to work with builders so that, you know. The builders have some love, it is not just, you know, I don't know, that's just my opinion.
I actually, I take, I I'm very much in support of this. Um, I think it's a great thing for Simsbury. I think we really need the time. And I actually think, contrary to what you said, I think that this um does allow the developer. To work with the town in zoning, because right now, they can bypass us, you know, we've we've seen what's happened with different. Um, pieces already and and lawsuits and all kinds of things. Um, and. Simsbury, um, you know, I I I just think it it provides us some time. So that we can um be thoughtful um about. How we take this on and continue on with this, um, rather than um someone else deciding. Uh, outside deciding for us what Simsbury looks like and what these projects look like. So I actually think it's, it actually, it provides us a better opportunity. Um, for developers to work with our zoning rather than bypass our zoning.
Right, they're finding loopholes in in coming with uh, you know, these applications in being able to bypass and then. Zoning turns it down and they sue us and I think this closes some of those loopholes.
And I do think we've, we have worked hard on um, you know, on this. We have housing in the pipeline. We have, you know, done a lot of work on this and and I think that that this is something that um could benefit us. Just to ha- to have, to have this time and and have this sort of.
If I could just add a couple of quick things. First of all, the pipeline Heather hit on is one hundred percent accurate. George, I think it's about four hundred and fifty units we have in the pipeline already amongst the multiple.
That's kind of a pru- entitled units, yeah.
Our pipeline is, I don't wanna say full, because we're still would welcome anybody with any applications. But to be able to seek this moratorium, you can't just on a whim seek it. We have accrued the points necessary to be allowed to seek it. This isn't just we decided. This was, we accrued and did the due diligence and this is our gesture of word. It's sort of an acknowledgement, okay, you guys are working with it. So whereas, you know, Curtis not to say you imply we might not work with someone, we have been and that's how we got these points. To be able to say, okay, we're gonna take the ball. Also, a moratorium, as the name implies, is a temporary order. We are not exempt forever. I believe it's four years.
Yeah.
Um, and our pipeline is four years full.
So it would literally dovetail if it did defunct and was still in effect. That when we acclimated with that substantial increase to our housing stock. Eight thirty G would again be a viable course if a developer did wanna seek it. So I wholeheartedly endorse this. I also would like to, just one last acknowledgement. The the board that recommended it to a SHPAK, uh, it was at the end of phase one and as we embark on phase two. Once it was discussed and voted on, it was deemed so important that it could not wait for the final report. That is coming in January of twenty five, and that's why we're here. So the board, this is a reference from SH- SHPAK. Um, that we take action because time is of the essence.
And and so I just wanna wrap it up. I I do, I did originally was thinking a little bit like Curtis was thinking. That zoning has turned down some things that may or may not have bearing or we've been sued on. Um, and I, it, my concern at first was that this would allow them to turn down things for certain nuances. That potentially could have resulted in some sort of affordable housing. Um, but again, they've still gotta follow all the zoning regulations. Um, and, you know, I've heard from other people. And and the other selling point to me at this point is um, the the SH- the SHPAK. We put them together for a reason. We pulled together people from multiple boards and commissions. And if they unanimously supported this uh multi-party, multi-board and commission. Um, and this is the job that we tax them with for our goals, then I would agree with them. Um, I do wanna ask if there's any cons to this. That was one thing I never heard, so I was just wondering, are there any cons to doing this?
So I'm not sure there's any cons for the town of Simsbury.
Okay.
I mean, there may be cons, you know, for for from housing advocacy groups who want. Who want no rules to be applied to applications like this. That, I don't, I don't know that that's um, that's certainly not, does not favor the town of Simsbury and its citizens.
Okay.
Is there a timeline? When's this application to be submitted?
So so ninety days is a, you know, a complicated process and, you know, when you submit stuff to the state, you never know which ways. They have a a submitted application that they're, they're really supposed to act within ninety days.
Okay, and and the other thing I will say is, this was built into the 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 law that this was an allowed thing to do.
Yeah, I was, I was, Steve said it, oh, Steve said it, right, we're really playing by the rules.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, in this particular case, so.
Um, so I'm gonna read the resolution. Should I read it?
It's highly up to you, sure.
Well, I'd, I will read it, actually, just I just wanna waste more time here. Twenty twenty four dash oh three, um, authorizing the application for a certificate of affordable housing project completion. Whereas a house, Simsbury Housing Policy Advisory Committee, affectionately known as the SHPAK. Voted on September eleventh twenty twenty four to recommend to the board of selectmen that the town apply to the commissioner of housing of the state of Connecticut. For a certificate of affordable housing project completion in accordance with CGS eight thirty G one four. Whereas Connecticut General Statutes, see, whatever, I'm not, was passed in nineteen eighty nine for the purposes of encouraging. The construction of new housing stock across the state of Connecticut. And whereas CGS eight thirty G sets a goal that at least ten percent of all housing stock in the town must be affordable based on certain statutory criteria. Whereas the town of Simsbury included as a primary goal, providing for a range of housing choices for people of all ages and economic circumstances. At all price points in its twenty twenty four plan of conservation and development. Whereas the board of selectmen established the Simsbury Housing Policy Advising Committee on February fourteenth twenty four. In order to undertake a review of the various strategies discussed in the interim report on housing development strategies and to report on its preferred recommendations. Um, and therefore be it resolved that we authorize town manager um and and director of planning and development to apply to the commissioner of housing. I'm not reading all the further resolves, because I'm gonna just make them, ask for the motion right now. Um, to ask for a motion effective October sixteen twenty four to authorize town manager Mark Nelson. And the director of community planning and development, George McGregor, to apply for a certificate of affordable housing project completion to the Connecticut Department of. Housing Commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, passed. Okay, ten.
I made my point.
I know, I was glad you did, thank you. Um, pass the uh, thanks, George.
Thanks, George.
That was, um, um, so the next item is the scheduling the public hearing again. Um, I'm gonna ask for a motion effective October sixteen twenty four to schedule a public hearing pursuant to CGS seven dash one sixty three E. Regarding the proposed sale of town-owned property located at the corner of Firetown Road and Owen Brook Boulevard for six P M. On Monday, November eighteenth twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we already accepted, thank you. Um, okay, so the next one is um, the alcohol waiver request for an event at the Apple Barn. Um, so um, the the Simsbury High School class of nineteen one is hosting an event at the Apple Barn. Um, they've asked if they can um have a kind of a BYOB thing. Um, in the past, my question was, we've done the Peyton Sips and we kinda gave um authority to let those happen. Um, under Parks and Rec, this is a little bit different, because this is kind of an outside group. It's not sponsored by the town. Um, so um, the approval is for this. A a couple of comments I would make is, you know, this would be something that I'm sure people would ask for going forward. Um, and I also um was thinking too, that when the fees and stuff like that are set to quote my peer Selectman Gatz. Do we have ways to monetize assets if we could even potentially jack up the rate a little bit? Um, if we're gonna allow alcohol, so you know, maybe people will wanna have parties there. Um, so that, those are my comments and and so I'll open up for discussion, if there's any discussion here.
My one question is, um, who, do, are they providing a certificate of insurance? Because if there's alcohol in in a uh facility, then our liability is increased.
We will ask them to do that if you approve it.
Yeah.
We didn't ask them yet, but that's very reasonable, yeah, absolutely.
Be a requirement then, it, for any of these going forward?
Yes.
Okay, so we would ensure that we would have some standards like the public gathering permit for anybody holding an event here?
Absolutely.
That they would have a certificate. Is there any other needs that we should consider?
That's the main one, I mean.
These presents or anything, no, okay. Um, okay.
What is this, uh, they're having part of a reunion, it sounds like?
Yeah.
No?
It's a social. So I will, if we're talking about policy, I feel that my my input would potentially be permanent. Because it is a town-owned facility, but if we're talking about this event, I need to recuse myself, but for clarifica- because I am a class officer.
Yes.
Um, but for clarification of your uh, just adding up, it's, we have reunions every fifth year.
Yeah.
This is a social for in-town Simsbury residents that are members of the class of eighty one.
Got it. So, um, my question then is, if we're going to be, since it's a town building. And there may be other things, like you said, that may come down, like I'm already thinking of one, at another town building. That may have a a request for this, is this, I think it's prudent for us to standardize something and have um an approval process for this.
And perhaps revisit the pricing.
Consider it done.
Okay.
How many people are we talking?
Fifty?
Oh, like four, I don't even think fifty, forty.
Well, the 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 Apple Barn only holds.
Not really.
The Apple Barn only holds a certain amount of people anyways, so.
Actually, honestly, it holds a hundred and fifty or not. But it's, um, one other thing, just the monetizing component, which goes beyond this one event, um, which I said I feel I can speak to. Holcomb Farm is a great supplement for the town of Granby. And they actually, when you have an event, you can actually provide the alcohol. And they have via their town insurance, the applicant can actually buy a liquor liability policy. BYOB by nature, the burden is on the consumer, because nobody is providing the beverage. Um, but as far as monetizing. The, I envy the town of Granby. They're making bank at Holcomb Farm. They do weddings and everything else. And we don't do any of that with our beautiful properties, which would make wonderful memories for people in our town. Um, so it is something I think in the future, we should consider pursuing as far as monetizing it. And not making it overrun where, you know, just people come to Simsbury, use us and leave, but you know, supply and demand.
Well, and that's one of the things that they're looking at in the uh committee for up at the farms and the and the venue, the restaurant and the venue, they're like, it's a waste, you know. We could be, they could be having wed- weddings up there, but they don't.
Okay, so.
Along those same lines, yes.
Yeah.
Similar, but different.
Okay, so I'm gonna um ask for a motion effective October sixteen twenty twenty four. To issue a waiver for the legal possession and use of alcohol. So, so again, it seems we're doing it just for one thing instead of doing it as a, as um, like a standard going forward.
In the, in the absence of a policy debated in in public, you should just approve this one.
I'm gonna approve this, but I'm gonna.
But I'm here, I'm here.
I, we're saying that we're asking for, to help create a policy.
And we will get that to you by the end of the year.
Okay, move effective October sixteen twenty twenty four to issue a waiver for the legal possession and use of alcohol. For the Simsbury High School class of nineteen eighty one event at the Apple Barn on October twenty sixth twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Have fun.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, anybody abstain?
Yeah, I may, over here.
Okay, I'm supposed to ask that, but I never do. Um, we did the reappointments. Any uh cor- corrections to the minute, meeting minutes? Um, I'll ask for a motion to approve the special m- meeting minutes from September twenty third. Um, and the special regular meeting minutes. Um, anybody wanna move that?
So moved.
Anybody wanna second that?
Second.
I have a correction. I have a friendly amendment. I know, I just, I'm doing this for Kevin.
Oh, you're gonna love that.
Um, there's a correction on the page seven. It refers to the date that we have to have the charter as October twenty second. And I'm pretty sure it's the twenty third unless somebody screwed up. So I would like to see that corrected. Cause I was nervous, like, did we miscalculate?
No, it was always very clearly the twenty third.
Yeah, I know. So anyway, so anybody, um, oh, okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, of course, it's quarter to nine. I'd like to ask for a motion um to move into executive session. Um, are these just with you?
And uh, staff can stay, Tom and.
Okay, um, ask for a motion to move into two executive sessions. Um, one for section one dash two hundred six D, the sale or purchase of real property. And the second one is um six E preliminary draft agreement with the board of selectmen, town manager Mark Nelson, deputy town manager. Tom Fitzgerald and um management special on Franklin Baruko. I'm announcing your name right, aren't I? Okay, so all the, all those in favor say aye. I don't think anybody's seconding it.
Second.
Okay, Diane and Steve, all say aye, aye. Can we take a two-minute break just to go to the bathroom?